This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of September 21st, 2020. Call the order, please.
Councilwoman Hutt's here. Mayor Proton Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Here.
Councilman Noah.
Here.
And Mayor Wallor.
Here. Please rise up in the place. I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America. Um, approval of the agenda. Someone would like to propose that?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Section. Councilwoman Hutt's?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Wallor?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Okay, approval of the minutes for regular session and closed session of September 8th, 2020. Any issues or changes? Thank you. Okay, um, tonight we'll be doing a little bit of a shuffle because of the minimum maximum of 10 people allowed in the room. So, um, I'll take citizens appearing before council on agenda non agenda items. Uh, allow five minutes each to address your concerns. The only time during the council meeting that you're allowed to address your concerns, and there are a couple of exceptions. Um, the first exception is that, uh, for the, if you're here or have a comment for the public hearing on the Brownfield Plan for 600 Walnut Street, please wait until the public hearing opens. And the other is, um, uh, Dr. Courier, Kevin Courier and their legal representative will, we will wait for their public comment until, uh, their appeals on the agenda. So anyone else that would like to, um, public comment, please come in and, uh, state your name and address for our records and come to the podium, please.
Hi, my name is Denise Burke. Um, live at 421 Sunset Boulevard, Boulevard, Alpena, Michigan. And I'm here to speak in support of the couriers in the LLC. I've known the couriers since I came to Alpena in 1995. Both Linda and Bob have done tremendous amount of, uh, help for this community. They volunteered. They've, um, just been real involved with church and active, and I support them and their family and their endeavor. I believe, as my shirt says, local, let's support local. They are, um, local people that have done a lot for our community. And their children all raised here, gone to school here, been part of this community. Their Kevin, who you'll hear from later, has just became an amazing man. And they, there are other children as well, and I just really want to offer my support for them in establishing another business here in Alpena County. Dr. Curry has had his eye business, which he's done above and beyond in helping out people at all different times. And I just offer my support for their family in this endeavor.
Got it? Steve. All right.
Angie Skiba, 635 River Street. I would like to also support the couriers in this endeavor. All around Alpena, all we ever hear is, "You should be supporting our local Alpena people." We all pay taxes here. We live here. We always hear shop local, keep our money local. You were elected to represent people from this city, not another city. Please review and change your choices for medical marijuana dispensary owners to two local people to represent Alpena. And I have no idea what you're thinking by choosing out of town people and putting money that they're going to be taking out of Alpena in their pockets and leaving the, leaving the city. We have a tax base that they support by having a business here. Couriers have done nothing but support people in every way, shape or form. Football, baseball, financially, sports and everything around town need to think local. Please support local. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Linda Courier. I'm the mother of Kevin Courier. He lives in Austin, um, right now, but when I heard that there was a possibility of him coming to Alpena and opening up a business, I was thrilled. I'd be thrilled bringing my kids to come to Alpena. He was born and raised here, still has friends here, and Alpena is just part of him. He loves Alpena. And since his day, and I still live here, what a better way to come back and invest in the community. We have made this town our home since 1981. And Bobby's worked here, and we both have given many hours and years investing in this community. Why would you give the dispensary to an outsider that doesn't understand our town and doesn't love us, love it like we do? Another big box door coming in and taking away local applications, like recently Lehman's leaving. Having local owners, what a better way to support this town. The family, our family will all work hard to make this successful and give jobs to our local people. Please invest in my son. I.
All set. Anybody online? All right. Thank you very much for your.
Cat Schultz.
I'm sorry?
Cat. Schultz.
Cat Schultz.
Just like, as you were saying.
Oh, okay.
I just had a question. I was curious about the application process, but I didn't know if I should ask that a question later or now, because I thought you said those comments would come later when his was up, but I heard people talking about Kevin's application.
Yeah, this, this will be the only opportunity you have.
Okay, in that case, um, I had a quick question. I know, uh, one of the newspaper articles said that you had six applications, but some people did not meet the deadline because they did not, um, attach the monetary amount that was required to do their application, but then later there was another news article saying that all six were still being considered. What, why is there a discrepancy between the two?
Yeah, um, I guess under the circumstances, since you already asked your question, um, normally this isn't a question and answer period, but, um, but after the, so the article was, was written, shall I say, slightly prematurely, and the next day, the, the checks came in and they were postmarked prior to the deadline. So, uh, just like a lot of things, we can't blame the mail system on not providing, um, the mail in time. Am I correct in saying that? Yeah. So, so that's what it was. All of the checks for all six were postmarked prior to the deadline and were accepted.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. All set? Steve?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. So now, next on the agenda is the, uh, public hearing. So if Bruce would like to come back in and probably, um, the engineer.
We have Mac McClellan online.
Oh, Mac is online as well? Okay, you can hear us, Mac?
Yeah, I'll be happy to intro this. This is a.
Okay, I'll open it up first. So the, the public hearing for the Brownfield Plan on 600 Walnut Street, I'll open the public, uh, public hearing. And, uh, first up, we'll have a report from Mac McClellan. He's the manager of the Brownfield Redevelopment for, well, Malpe. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. I wanted to speak for 30 minutes, but Rachel limited me to three, so I'll be real brief.
Rachel.
Just a, a quick note, we did have a presentation on the Brownfield Plan at the last city council meeting. This is a project to redevelop a portion of the former Alpena Community College property at 600 Walnut Street. That portion, kind of the southeast portion, uh, will be removed. There is quite a bit of asbestos abatement and demolition that needs to be done for the project, and it challenges the economic viability of the project. This Brownfield Plan would provide for reimbursement for those extraordinary eligible, uh, Brownfield eligible activities through the capture of increased taxes generated by the investment over time. Brownfield Plan is anticipated to, uh, re, uh, to reimburse all of these costs, uh, over about a period of, uh, 15 years. Current taxes on the property are about $1,200, and after the project is completed, uh, and the Brownfield eligible activity is paid off, the taxes range in $10,000. It was significant return on the investment that's made by, uh, to help support the project. Questions, I believe that Bruce is there and he could talk about the project as well.
Okay, uh, thank you, sir. Uh, next up, I'll open up the public comment. Are there any live public comments for the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan? Phil, anything?
No.
All right. Thank you. All right, closed public comment and request, uh, any written comments to the clerk's office?
I have not received any.
Sure, thank you. Closed public hearing. Um, I, I think we pretty much all understand the project. Did you have it? Do you have anything to add? I think we.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Somebody said, uh, that was coming that way.
Um. Was that you, Mac, that said?
No, it wasn't me.
Can anyone hear me?
Oh, okay. Go, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, just curious how the licensure was processed before the application?
Oh, okay, um, I'm sorry, but we've moved on significantly from the medical marijuana topic, so.
Oh, all right. I called him late, that's not bad.
So that's okay. I'll tell you what, um, if you've got, if you do have a question, um, just reach out to either the city manager tomorrow at, at City Hall, and she'll be able to answer your question if you'd like.
All right, will do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sorry. All right, um, back to the public hearing. Any, any discussion on the Brownfield?
No.
One question about, um, the number of jobs created. I thought it said two and a half jobs, but is there?
The red carpet, everybody that's in the existing building, the new jobs will be to maintenance.
That's why I wanted to.
Supply 100% maintained building, maintaining inside and outside services.
Okay. All right, and so next up would be to, um, if we're in favor, to adopt the Resolution 2020 dash oh six to approve the Brownfield Plan for 600 Walnut Street Development. So move.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Wallor? And Councilwoman Hutt's?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Good luck on your projects, sir. Good night. Thank you, Mac. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next up is the consent agenda. One item, bills to be allowed at the amount of $435,694.30. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Wallor?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hutt?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
When we go down to item 10, it's a mayor proclamation, uh, today for Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October. Whereas October 2020 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a platform for educating women about the importance of early detection of breast cancer through mammography and other methods, and whereas an estimated 276,480 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed in American women during 2020, and about 42,170 women will die this year from the disease. And whereas detection of breast cancer at an early stage greatly improves the chances for successful treatment and survival, and whereas the Zanta Club of Alpena remains dedicated to educating and empowering women with, uh, their own breast health and have organized the 14th Annual Zanta Walks for Women Virtual Walk 5K Run completed no loan, no later than October 3rd, 2020. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Wallor, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Alpena, and encourage all area citizens to take part and be aware of this occasion in our community. And as a note, there were several, um, Zanta, we had a photo op out front prior to the meeting. Next up is new business, A is concrete pavement restoration bid recommendation.
On February 4th, 2020, the city received an open bid for concrete pavement restoration project. When this project was originally bid, pre-COVID, that's why the big delay. The, uh, the city intended to perform preventative maintenance work on concrete sections on Woodward Avenue and Ford Avenue. Bid documents were sent to five firms specializing in concrete work, plan rooms, and also posted on the city's website, with one proposal received, listed below. Hunt Brothers Concrete out of Woodmore, Michigan, $64,957 for Woodward, or for Woodward Avenue, and $54,0128.50 for Ford Avenue. Due to budget constraints at the end of 2019-20, the project was put on hold, and the contractor agreed on the proposed, uh, the proposal until fiscal year 2021. During this time, the city was approached by the Alpena County Road Commission requesting the ability to use, utilize 11th Avenue as a portion of the detour route for their Bagley Street Bridge reconstruction. After consideration, the city agreed it was in the best interest of the community to expedite the construction of the bridge from a two-year construction window to a one-year construction window, and agreed to allow the road commission to use 11th Avenue as a detour route. It's not uncommon, we, we switch back and forth. We have used county road commission roads at times for detour routes. They've used ours, and it's a mutual working relationship that we have. After reviewing the street, staff decided we should reconsider our plans for maintenance repairs on Woodward and Ford Avenue, and reallocate our preventative maintenance money into 11th Avenue to improve the ride quality and prevent any critical failures on the street due to the anticipated increased traffic. Staff met on site with Craig Hunt of Hunt Brothers and developed an alternate proposal for the repair of 11th Avenue. Due to limited funds available, this plan focuses on making repairs to the most efficient sections of 11th Avenue to improve the ride quality of the streets, of the street. These repairs will only focus on the actual drive lanes of the street, leaving the sections adjacent to the curb where traffic will travel the least. Hunt Brothers poses to repair individual joints for $750 and full sections for $2,354. There are over 350 joints in the travel lanes of the section of 11th Avenue that require over $500,000 to repair all the joints and the drive lanes. This would include sections of concrete, because we are going to be replacing some, some slabs of concrete along with joint repairs. It's my recommendation, the city engineer, that the concrete restoration of 11th Avenue be awarded in accordance with the attached proposal to Hunt Brothers Concrete for the cost not to exceed the budget amount of $55,000. We obviously have a lot more work to be done on 11th as far as the number of joints that need to be repaired and replaced. We certainly don't have the resources to undertake it all, so we are going to concentrate on the, on the worst ones. We've done this in the past. We've had, uh, not maybe to this extent, but we've had individual sections. That we have, uh, done repairs to out there. What we will do is reallocate, uh, reprogram Ford Avenue and Woodward Avenue for next fiscal year, put that back into our CIP to do that. Biggest thing is we've all, we, I think we've all received complaints about the noise and the ride quality of that avenue. With increased traffic, we wanted to go ahead and try to get, they said the worst ones done, try to minimize that as much as possible. That road is, while in excess of, uh, 40 years old, it's held up very well. Yeah, while we may see some additional deterioration from the additional traffic, I don't expect it to be abnormal, we're seeing major catastrophic, so, um, this is, they said checked in priority when the changes came down for the Bagley Street Bridge project.
Rich, only question I had, these aren't like temporary fixes that we're going to put in just to kind of make the road hold up. This is going to be something that we're going to repair, and it's going to be a permanent fix.
There'll be permanent joint repairs, uh, and slab replacements.
Why is 11th concrete? And not just asphalt, like?
It was, you know, it was, we had a number, you know, uh, Woodward Avenue used to be concrete at one time. We've been overriding that with asphalt. A number of the streets in the community used to be concrete, but, um, you know, I would love, I'd love to put it back in, in concrete, because you, you can get, you know, probably 25, 30 years of a concrete street before you have to go back in and do some movement directions or asphalt, you know?
Sorry. It works for you.
It's very costly.
Oh, okay. All right.
Question, so the 11th Street project, you're proposing $55,000, and other two projects, that would want to be one of those budgets, are we going to still do one of the others or?
We'll, we'll reallocate those. The money wasn't carried forward to do those.
So the, the other two projects would have been over budget anyhow?
So just, just so I'm clear, we'll get no money from M.D.A. for, for W.P. It's not.
This isn't an M.D.A. project, it's a county road commission project. The county road commission is getting 95% funded from the state, but, um. It used to work for me. There's no, there's no money set up in there.
Any other questions? Or questions? I have none even? I move we approve the proposal for concrete restoration on 11th Avenue, uh, to Hunt Brothers for the cost of not to exceed $55,000.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Wallor?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hutt?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is elevator shaft waterproofing.
Well, that's close to me. I think, uh, there was a budget amendment for, for this, but, um, Mike Kalashowski, who's out of town tonight, uh, has been working with the State of Michigan Elevator Division and Schindler Elevators, waterproof the elevator shaft to prevent water from pooling in the elevator pit. As the work has to be performed, as the work to be performed falls within the purview of maintenance work, the certified elevator inspector must be on site when the work is performed. It's not uncommon, we replace the carpet in the elevator, we had to have an elevator inspector there. Dairy Well Oversight Division. Mike reached out to the two companies recommended by Schindler Elevator who performed the waterproofing work. The price quotes for these two companies were as follows. Basement Tech, $7,860, and Ram Construction, $11,882. In addition, the cost from Schindler Elevator, the on-site inspector work performed is $8,795. Thus, the total cost of the project is estimated at $16,655. Mike's comments regarding the project is emailed to me as follows. Due to the increased water table levels, the elevator shaft at City Hall maintains approximately eight inches of water. No water is allowed for the state elevator division, requiring mitigation. No one is allowed to enter the elevator shaft pit unless properly trained or under the direct supervision of an elevator dirty person for Public Act 333 of 1976. An attached is the estimate from Schindler Elevator, who is under contract with the city to provide routine maintenance, routine inspections and maintenance, also attached to the two price estimates from the company's experience and recommended by Schindler Elevator. Basement Tech did waterproof the elevator shaft of the Alpena housing a few years back with good results. I would request we put this on the next council agenda for approval. Schindler and Basement Tech. It is my recommendation, there's recommendation of Mike Kalashowski, that the city award the elevator shaft waterproofing to Basement Tech in the amount of $7,860, to authorize the expenditure of $8,795 with our current elevator maintenance contractor, Schindler Elevator, for this project. Yes, we did get in the long line of work. Their, their billing rate is $325 now.
We saw that.
Even, even though they're just standing there watching.
And they have to be on site the entire time anybody's in that shaft doing any kind of work at all? It isn't like they're not just doing an inspection, they have to be there monitoring all the work in the shafts. Yes, I'm looking at it in field.
It's, it's not necessary evil, but, um, I will say this, you know, a number of years ago, we had another elevator company that was doing inspections and maintenance. It was significantly more, um, per, per annual contract per hour when they were on site.
Any other questions?
Do we need this in two motions?
That'd be a good question. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're paying.
Just, just as a reminder, as Rich mentioned, um, last council meeting, if, there was a budget amendment request to decrease bond bounds by 17,000.
Okay. So let's go, let's go with Basement Tech first, and then, or, or Ram, whichever, same as you choose.
Okay, I move we award Basement Tech the contract for $7,860.
Mayor Wallor? Councilwoman Hutt?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then the additional cost for Schindler Elevator.
I move we award the additional cost to Schindler Elevator, Elevator for $8,795.
Support.
Councilwoman Hutt?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Wallor?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to vacate the room, so let me, bodies please.
Make some room. All right, so next on the agenda is neighborhood provisioning, uh, courier, LLC, medical marijuana applicant, application appeal. So, as I mentioned to the courier, to the couriers already, um, they have three representatives. Uh, Dr. Courier is son Kevin, and then they have a legal rep. By all means, make sure that, Eric, uh, make, make sure that they can, that the other, the two can hear, um, if they want to come, at least fire it up in, so everybody can hear what's going on, or is there a speaker out there that thinks it better?
I understood. I think it's probably great here with the interview, and you want one up at the podium?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, of course, if you could introduce yourselves when you come up, and, um, I think we're going to open up really quick with Bill. Piper is going to open us up real quick, just to kind of, because this is a new, kind of a new territory, I think, for us.
Yeah, this is the first of the allow to see that the city has conducted. I spoke with Kevin Courier by the phone last, probably that was, and just kind of advised him this procedure. We're not going to put some arbitrariness on any of you in terms of speaking and making your case. This is not a court of law, though, so nobody has sworn, uh, it's not argument back and forth, things that need to. The council may ask questions of you, they may ask questions of staff, they may ask questions of city manager. We know what your, you know, what your arguments are. We would ask that you go in the order that they presented your appeal. I'm not sure if council is going to want to decide each one as we go. Probably would be easier for everybody to do it that way, or, uh, you know, if you stick to the script, so to speak, rather than jump around, it'd probably be easier for all of us. I am not going to interrupt and ask any questions. If the council may have questions, they may have questions for each of you. We would, we would ask that, uh. We would, we would ask that, that you not repeat each other. We may have some overlap, but we don't want three people coming up and making the same argument and presenting the same setbacks as Dwight and Pierre Fisher. So with that being said, I guess you're going to speak first.
Yeah, and Doctor, if I, I'll just interrupt one last time. I'm sorry. So this is, so how I envision this is, is we would like to go one, one, you've outlined some issues and, in your appeal, and I'd like to address them, each one individually, because if you speak to all of them and then we start going through one another, we might lose something that you might have said about the first one. By the time we get to the last one, so, and I'm not sure which of you will be presenting that part when it comes to the actual, I think there's four main, four main arguments with, in the appeal, and so we'll approach those kind of one at a time, and, and hopefully that'll go constructively.
Mayor?
Sir?
I, I have a slideshow, but I just didn't know who was going to run that. So, okay, so if you want, I can, I'll run it from here, but I just wanted to know if I should be, what I should be ready for.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll give it a little signal. Okay. All right. Excellent, thank you, sir.
May I?
You may.
May I? Hello, everyone, my name's Dr. Bob Courier, and I have lived in this town 40 years. I am a board certified physician and surgeon specializing in ophthalmology. Actually, and during this COVID time, I've actually had to turn into a full physician because of the nature being available for people when they needed it during this time. So it's been most entertaining here, to tell you the truth. Having been here locally for 40 years, I have three children that have been raised here, went to high school here, and went to college here as well, and also want to be here. And we also run other businesses besides my eye practice. With that, we also run into regulated businesses as well, which include the FAA, CMS, which is a payment arm for Medicare and Medicaid, as well as LARA, which is the licensing regulatory agency of the state that does this, but we do this also for our licensing purposes as well, and I have for 40 years. So we're very familiar with all of them as well. Also, within this practice, I also work with many, many people and have since 2008 on medical cannabis. As a physician, I have helped many people obtain medical cannabis cards, and I still work with them now. We think we are the perfect fit, being local, also knowing many of these patients, and also working with them, that we would continue to do so here locally, also with our patients, and then also with other people that would be coming on new as medical cannabis. With this, they've all been run successfully. We do not anticipate any snap, who's with us running anything like this unsuccessfully at all, or we won't operate at all, and we won't get in the way of the people in Alpina. So with that in mind, I would like to say that we're, what we're going to do tonight, if we may, is to address the rubric. And then in addressing rubric, we're going to answer them, just like you said, Mayor, one at a time. And we're going to show you that also, we not only deserve those points, but we think that we're the perfect fit for the medical cannabis here in Alpina. And I thank you, and I thank you for the effort you put in in grading us. Thank you, Ms. Winski, I thank you, and I thank you for letting us, giving us this opportunity to come up here so we could, you know, tell you this as well. So as neighbors and friends, I thank you very much. With that in mind, Kevin's going to explain the rubric, and then go from there and show you in the application where we can find these points. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Doctor Kevin.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
I'm a bit of a mumbling in general, do I keep the mast? You can. Is it? You can bring it. Okay, I'm unbelievable, and this is a little, we're quite a distance from. Okay, thank you. Let me know if it's expensive at all either. Thank you for seeing us today and taking the time to go over all this. My name is Kevin Courier, I'm a local Alpina resident, born and raised here, and I'm here today on behalf of Neighborhood Provisions to talk about our medical marijuana application appeal. We have, we were scored 35 out of the 44 points. We feel nine points need to be relooked at and could have been overlooked in some parts, so I'm here to present a PowerPoint, which I assure you is much shorter than the actual application, and much shorter than the, even the appeal, so I boiled it down even more, and that's definitely something I've learned in this process, boiling down is better. So I wrote it down into parts where we have the points that were overlooked, our interpretation of the question, and where you can find it in the application, in the actual test. So without further ado, let us begin. So the first part of, the first three points that we missed are in section two, in the ability to operate, the capital investment of at least 500,000, that's one point, and the capital investment of at least 900,000, which is two points. And next slide, please. Thank you. Our interpretation of that question was to show capital investment through procedures, facility build-out, daily business function, employment wages. They were textual descriptions, not monetary descriptions, and that is how we interpreted the question asked. We do not think you need to describe in monetary value, but simply describe in textual descriptions. And you can see that in the text of the next slide. We break it down into different sections with attachment B, attachment E1, E2, E3G, and so on. Basically, you have descriptions in there, and it further breaks down in the capital investment chart that was attached to the, the appeal. Please do, was that received? It was. Okay, okay. What we did with that is we took the written description we have in our application and put monetary values to them in our appeal. As we read the question, it's not included, we did not include it in our actual application, but in the appeal, we revenue that. Although the answers were in the application, they weren't there in monetary value. And so we put the monetary value to them in the chart that was attached to the appeal. And that wasn't included at the time of application, you said, there was a key word there, you said that that was included with your appeal, but not included on the original application? So it's the same information. Okay. The one in the application is simply the textual, and the one included in the appeal is the monetary. The way we read the question is, the monetary one wasn't necessary, we thought it was as simple, you had to describe the procedure, the operating plan, and that was sufficient to show our $900,000. And if you look at, we added everything up in the chart, and it shows that it exceeds the $900,000 capital investment. And to further push that, I know this is not required, but if there's any question if the capital investment, we have access to, we do have a account statement here. Again, it was not, we did not read it as necessary in the application, but we do have a statement here that does say we do have the necessary capital funds for the capital investment required. And I can pass this around later or now, but is there a need? Okay. So we're all set? I, I think so, do you want to get questions or I? Yeah, well, then what I'll do is, is, and Bill will keep me on track, but what I'll read is, is, so you submitted this, our, the same committee reviewed everything that you had sent in, the committee that, I don't even know if we gave it a name or not, but, and made their statement to, as to why those, why those weren't scored that way, so I'm going to read that really quick. Yes. And then we'll, and then we'll discuss it briefly. So, so this is section two, operate, ability to operate business, and then the business plan is what the subsection is called. Applicant was awarded zero points in this section for capital investment of at least $500,000 or capital investment of at least $900,000. In the applicant, in the application, the applicant included his own scoring matrix where both selections were circled, indicating that they intended to invest over $900,000. However, a description or list of those capital investments was not included in the original application, so there was no way to verify that their investment totaled up to the required amount. Other applicants did include this information. The applicant did submit such a list upon appeal, however, it is questionable whether the investments listed actually would be considered capital investments, usually considered permanent fixed assets such as property and equipment. In the appeal, the applicant apologized for not placing the detailed description of the monetary value. So, so that's, so that was their response, and that is probably, the fact that it wasn't included, and there was, so there was no way for the, for the committee to know what that monetary value was, was obviously probably the biggest reason. Well, obviously the, the only reason, because they wouldn't have had the list, so the second part of their comment is, is kind of afterwards anyhow, so. So that's, that's where the, that's where the scoring came from, and so, so basically their response is that there was no monetary value for them to know, other than you circling yes for both of them, that it would, that it would account to that amount. So my question would be, is, does anybody, is there anyone on council that, that would like to hear more about the appeal or has questions about the appeal of that topic itself? Okay. So this, is there anyone here that would like to, I don't even know what the terminology is, maybe perhaps to overturn the, the committee's response to that?
Well, I think any of the council members, I think would be allowed to make a motion that directs that one point or two points be added to their score, and then if it was a majority vote, a council member said agree with that, and then the committee would re-score and add those points. I don't know what that would do one by one, obviously, if they were granted enough points throughout the process such that they became one of the top two, then, you know, we'd vote them there.
Right.
If they're awarded points that don't put them in the top two, it wouldn't matter anyways, and we need to minimize that, but I think if, once again, if a member saw they should get those points, made a motion, and it was seconded, and voted, and a majority vote, said they've been in points, then we give them the vote.
And the only correction I would have is that it, that, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would matter in the event that the two that were selected, is if they don't, if they don't make it to number two through this process, it will matter if the other two don't, don't do the necessary steps in the six months that they have, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but they would, we would just go down to the next one. So, so pretty much every point that we change is, is important perhaps in the future.
I agree.
So.
And I mean, if they, if they get to number three, and one of the first two don't follow through, and, you know, get going, get over, you know, they would stay on the line to get one of those two licenses at that point.
Right, okay. So I'll entertain a motion if there is one to, to award either of the point values for 500,000 or 900,000 for that, for that portion.
I'm going to move we award at least one point for that section.
And a one point would be for a capital investment of at least 500,000 dollars. Is there support for that? Support. So in the, in the discussion period that we're in now, I guess I will question before we vote as to if there wasn't evidence for them to, to exceed or to have at least 500,000, why would we, why would we give them a point?
That's right.
Okay, so what, what you're suggesting is that we give them a point, one point, which would mean that they, that they showed a capital investment of at least $500,000. And the argument, I guess, argument for lack of better terms, because Bill uses it all the time. So the argument would be is that it wasn't in the initial package. But if we're going to go by, if what you're suggesting is that we go by what they sent in afterwards, it's more, it exceeds even that. So I guess I would ask you to explain here.
Well, because I, I think based on what they gave afterwards, on numbers, that they should get all of the points, but I'm not sure with the missing information that the committee had to work with. I understand why they did what they did, but you know that anyone goes into this, it's going to, it's going to easily be a $500,000 investment, easily. I can't quantify, you know, I can't, because they gave you numbers, but anything over that, I think that, that they should be awarded at least a one point.
And you're, again, just to clarify what you and the mayor were discussing, is that you're using the information that was presented after the fact?
Right.
And I guess for myself, you know, that's the one issue, because when we debated all of the rules of this stuff, all of the information had to be included with the application at that time. You know, and the appeal was to ensure that it was scored properly based on that information, not based on additional information we would learn after. And I'm just going back to what we discussed during the, the rubric and, and all of this.
So can I ask a question of couriers? Did anyone reach out to the city at any time before you put in your application and ask about the specific, this specific topic that, that you didn't get any points out?
Not this specific topic, because we felt it was clear, because the questions in the rubric before and after asked for descriptions, and when it comes to the capital investment, it simply stated capital investment of at least 500 and 900,000 dollars. So we felt our textual evidence in there was sufficient enough, because it did not ask for a specific description, a monetary description in the actual question.
That's okay. And I know that other people have put in, according to the committee, they have put in amounts, but if you do read that question, it just is kind of a.
But I guess, so here's, I guess here's my thing, and, and I just love you guys. So it's very difficult for me to separate, but I have to, it's what we do. I'm basically looking at someone that I don't know from Adam, and that's how I have to be. My problem with, I have two issues with awarding points now. One is that, is that there just wasn't, if I was sitting here, and what I did last night was I, I scored, I actually didn't realize that, that the city manager had sent me the committee's comments, and so I didn't learn that until today. But what I did last night was I went through the whole thing, I read your, your rebuttal to their things, and I, and so I re-scored, so I, I scored you as if I was sitting on that committee, and I'm glad that I wasn't, because I wouldn't have wanted to do five more, but, and so I, I looked for that as well, and I didn't see, it had the, it had the, the amount that you paid for the property was in there, but it didn't have anything else. And so, so part of my issue would be is that I understand that I wouldn't be able to sit here and say, and look at everything else that was explained in, in, in an actual fantastic application, by the way, and be able to tell if that was $500,000 or a million dollars, I just wouldn't have known. My issue with, with going on new data is that what's that going to be for the other five applicants that didn't get 44 points? And if we start, if we start now accepting more data from one applicant, this appeal could go beyond and into others that are going to say, wow, I didn't know that we could give you more data after the fact. And so that's, that's the issue I have with awarding and changing the, the plan that they have. And I honestly, like I said, it's, it's a difficult process for me, but that's where I'm at with it, so I just, I don't see where I would be able to.
That's okay.
So I'm just explaining myself.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
In order that applicants given a copy of the rubric, but they're going to be scored on?
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
On the one side with the application materials, yes.
Yeah.
So if no amount was in there, then how would the committee know how many points to assign?
Well, that's the, that's the argument. And if you, if you look at what was actually sent in, and, and, you know, then you're going off just the text. And the text didn't have the, the monetary information that was provided after the fact, if I recall incorrectly.
And I think it was their job to interpret how much those were valued.
Yeah.
There's no hard numbers in there.
Yeah. You know, and just, you know, from my perspective, to kind of echo what the mayor was saying is, one, information after the fact, that's why I asked the question. Because we did have that discussion when we were putting together these, you know, how one information was due and what was going to come in and such. The other thing is, is that, you know, there was that opportunity, I think, and I can't recall 100%. We discussed during that too. It's like, what if somebody calls in with questions and interpretations? And how was that going to be, what needs to be supplied, who was, was that going to be available? So I think there was an opportunity for that end of it. And, you know, whenever I see the word capital investment, having been in business for a long time, I automatically know somebody's looking for numbers. But that's my perspective, okay, on that. So when I, when I read it, that's the first thing I said is, I've got to put some dollars down here, because that's the investment that I'm paying for.
May I also point something out, as long as we're on that topic? If you don't mind, I don't mean to interrupt, excuse me. Anyway, if you just take the wages that were proposed, which is even, and it'll be pointed out, it'd be over what you require and multiplied by the amount of people that you also require us to hire, plus the building, that's all in there, and that's over $500,000. So it's in the application.
Are we considered capital, capital investment? I don't, I don't know, because I just, I don't.
We're in that kind of business.
We just don't specifically gain capital. Both like infrastructure and building.
Do you mind if I, I'm, I'm.
No, you're legal counsel.
I'm legal counsel. I handle cannabis law throughout this year. Capitalization requirements, it's part of the application. They listed, yes, so they're testing to that they can handle that amount. I don't know your ordinance, if you requested, like the state does, to have actual proof. I don't, I didn't see it anywhere in there. So just them alone, the testing and application that they're, yes, they can meet it, should be sufficient. That being said, it also, a capital investment, wages to a, which you have to play, pay an employee, it's obviously money invested into a company you have to, you're going to need that capital in order to operate.
Well, excuse me, another thing, we have to, in order to even be here tonight, we have to attest to WARA and the state that we have funds in holding and available. We have to have that for them. And that's not even, you haven't asked that of us as a requirement, but the state does. And so for us to even be here, the three app, from the state, we have to have that, those funds available, and we have to have it attested to as well. So they're, they're available, and they're there, in order for us to even be here through the state, although it wasn't required on this application of us here locally. Thank you.
The one thing I looked at was the factor of the first chart with the $526,000, which does not say anything about wages at all. It is back investment of material supplies, property acquisitions like this. So that is an investment there, but there is no wages requirement underneath that section there. It is under the other one for the 1.9 million, but not for the first. So that was the reason we're not looking at in that situation there for at least the awarded one point. But I don't think wages fit in the initial investment, or anything like this.
What's the, do you mind if I ask you what the state's, what the state's capital limit is?
Provision, Senator, off the top of my head, I believe it's $300,000. Can't confirm that without, with the votes.
Can we have a copy of the actual application? I've read it before, I have two excerpts right now.
I just want to see. Right, yeah. What's asked specifically?
The one thing I would give you, one thing here in the attachment, E, business plan, please include the following on the application. It says a detailed description of estimated capital of real or personal property. Estimated, and it gives that in their detailed description of estimated capital investment for real or personal property is called that portion of these. And again, it's hard for me to separate the business thing. But every time I've ever seen a description of it, from my perspective, from my perspective, the law of capital investment for real property, use of real or personal property is defined in anything. And as far as I know, Bill, just a random question. When they talk of real or personal property, are they always performing to not wages in investment? But they're looking at what is real and tangible, either buildings, equipment, or desk pens, those type of things in reference?
That's the way I, and the only thing that I saw in the application that showed an actual dollar amount invested was the amount of the purchase of the property, which is $119,095.
Okay.
I didn't see anything else in the application that specifically said we're going to spend this much to renovate the building. We're going to spend this much on capital, meaning desks, computers, things like that. This, this information is here now, but it wasn't part of the application book. So it's just not in there. And then we said that, that I guess the question may have been considered confusing, or may have meant itself to a couple different interpretations. I don't see that myself. And, and I don't want the council to feel like they should judge their application versus everybody else, because that's not what you're here to decide. But the other applications did contain that particular information. So several people read it one way, fairness to Kevin, you know, he read it another maybe. But the only real dollars that the committee could put on was the, was the dollar investment for the property itself, which is $119,000. And so that's, you know, that's not enough to quantify, give a point for the $500,000. That's, I think that's what the committee did, is that we don't have enough information here to actually establish that that's how much they're going to invest.
They looked up examples of capital investment, and we just are not one of them. It's things like land and buildings, construction, landscape improvements, furniture, infrastructure, machines, computing, vehicles, software development, acquisitions and branding.
So everything that is on the list that was sent afterwards, that comes to...
I wonder if inventory though is considered a capital investment or not? I just wonder. I don't know that it would, maybe initial inventory.
That might be more working capital.
I wonder, because without that, then real.
Just kind of looking now to answer, I guess. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Use any honor.
Anthony. Made a point about, about signing, about signing the bottom. And so if someone were to interpret this as if they didn't have to send any information, and they circled five and nine, and then signed the bottom. And that, that's kind of where you were going.
Same as signing an affidavit, attaching that amount.
So I was, I was looking over the different affidavits that are required, because there, there are a couple of them in here. And then the bottom of the entire document. I had it last night. So, so this says, I, the undersigned, have the authority to sign this application on behalf of courier, LLC, the facility and company. I have read all of the above answers, including all sheets and information provided in connection with the application, and they are true and correct. The facility agrees to comply with all the terms and conditions of the permit as it may be issued. Finally, I understand that the facility has a, has a continuing duty to provide the city of Alpina with current information and will notify the city clerk in writing of changes to the facility's mailing address, phone numbers, electronic email address, and other contact information, as well as changes to any other information the applicant has provided the city as part of the permit application within 10 days of any such change occurring. I acknowledge that the city of Alpina may be required from time to time to release records in its possession. The applicant hereby agrees permission to the city of Alpina to release any records, materials received by the city, and the applicant is, may request to do, permitted by the Freedom of Information Act. And then, so that's the, that's kind of the bottom. And I get, I get that. Just kind of looking over some of the other.
Question for Rachel.
Yes. For the business plan, for the first section, with a question, applicant presents a detailed description of estimated capital.
Could you give them a point for that?
Yeah. So that was, I guess, I was that we interpreted as... So they did have a description of different types of investments they would make, but we didn't see the numbers associated with that. So we did give them the one point.
In fact, if I may, that information along with the adestation should be at the bottom, and I'm circling yes, should be sufficient to show the capitalization requirements. He's acknowledging that they can meet the $500,000 and $900,000. It's similar how the state, I mean, the state does a CPA do an adestation, it's not much.
Was this information submitted within 10 days of the application?
It was within 10 days.
It was within 10 days? Is that, yeah.
Amber, what was that, that you were just reading that you asked?
It's, it's on actually the other score and rubric. There's the things that are in the application are just the numbers. Section two, two A, business plan. The first question is that they, do they present a detailed description of the capital investment? And they did give them a point for that statement, but then not for the subsequent question or points for value amount, because there were non-values listed for that, if that's retained like that. Description, but they've not estimated the deficit.
Can somebody second them off?
Yeah, Dan, wait. Yep. We're doing, we're in the midst of discussion.
And I would just like to point out in the appeals process, it says the applicant must submit narrative request for due process that includes detailed information and all supporting documentation for any and all points they wish to have council consider. And that's what they've done with this. I mean, they didn't say that we would only consider what, what's in the app. And we're not going off, we're not going off into the weeds by looking at numbers, because they talk about it.
They show the building plans and renovation plans.
Let me see, that you read this, Mayor, the bottom, basically said information can be accepted. Or were you trying to?
I think that's where maybe Danny was going. I was just reading it because it became part of the argument of them attesting to the information, because, well, like anything, you fill out, you always kind of attest at the bottom that everything you wrote in here is true, to the best of your knowledge, and things of that nature. The 10-day thing, I think if I'm reading it right, is, is, is different.
I think it has changes.
There are changes in your, in your address and operations. Sorry.
Any other information?
It's a little bit blurry. Let me find where it starts. Finally, I understand that, that the facility has a continuing duty to provide the city of Alpina with correct information and will notify the city clerk in writing of any changes in the facility's mailing address, phone numbers, electronic email address, or other contact information, as well as changes of, to any other information the applicant has provided to the city as part of the permit application within 10 days of any such change occurring. Okay, so that's after the permit is actually issued. Yeah. As a, so it... So it wants the permit issue, not the application. It doesn't say application, it's after the permit is issued. Understood? You said correctly. So, so if we issue the permit and they change any of that information, then it has to be within a 10 day period. And then, right, but then, of course, there was the seven day period that, that Cindy addressed as far as information. And I can't dispute the information that was provided afterwards. I mean, it's, it's fantastic. Wish it was in there already. But. So I see where the, I definitely see where the committee was and how they came up with their answer of no points for either. I understand and. And can argue that you've now submitted some documentation that, that explains that I'm sure had they had that information, they would have pointed it. So the question remains. The question, I guess, remains is. Is, are, are we allowing this information to come in afterwards based on the fact that they didn't understand that it was necessary to be in the initial application? Sound about, eh? Yeah. Because the way you interpreted it, you mentioned before that, that everything that said that it required some kind of documentation did, and this one didn't. So.
They did include the actual rubric indicating, yes, that it was their intention and if they signed it. So I guess if that's what you're saying for the process statement to go along with the plans, I may concede that, that side. I may concede the point that they're making with that.
Okay, and then, so the second, excuse me, so, so the first chart. That adds up to 526,485 is capital investment based on anticipated startup costs of first year operating cost neighborhood planning. Approximately $200,000 for the project in order for company to start up. David Willow gives an example of our anticipated startup costs for neighborhood provision as both proposals of renovating the existing structure and the new facility both. Create timely revenue. We will renovate the existing structure, the renovation costs are based on the, on the tenant improvements estimated at $6,000 per square foot. Once capital can be reinvested, those will sit for a better. So the chart that adds up to $526, which your argument would be that, would that would reward them a point, consists of the building acquisition, renovate the existing structure, security plan, security equipment, furniture fixtures, computer hardware, software, IT services, equipment, weighing and measuring equipment, contingencies, consulting, attorney, accounting. Packaging and labeling, place buys, waste management, office supplies, place buys, employee training, initial inventory website, and then the total. So we would consider those. Would anyone not consider those as, as meeting the, what we're calling capital investments in the rubric?
I would tell capital investments to be the actual hard property. If that's the case, the other buildings should count and current buildings and equipment, but wages and inventory wouldn't. And that's always.
Right, well, wages aren't in that chart that I just read.
That's what I just said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what I just said, not counting, I mean, I'm always, as actual solid investment, but the current building, and if the intention was to build a new building, which has had to, I'm just saying that those things alone for the capital investment would meet that. The details of the dollar value presented initially, but wages and inventory, any business sense of capital investments that we're operating or. For all those things they claim to do to exceed the amount.
Supplies are not considered capital.
I guess for argument's sake, they're only a thousand dollars something, so it would still be. That's what I was kind of looking at, reading this couple of things that might be questionable.
I did a caution at least of these. I, if you're counting things that might be capital investment and. I get 346,485, but that's going with building acquisition, renovation, security equipment, furnitures and fixtures, computer hardware and software. I'm not considering services. Equipment, weighing and measuring equipment. I did, I did throw in the supplies there. Employee supplies, office supplies, painting supplies, and I even threw in those websites, but not the initial inventory or, or employee training or services.
So consulting and attorney would be services. So you did it.
That's what I considered. That's just my interpretation of it.
And again, I, I guess I just, that's where I lack, whether I have to count on you guys and Bill to tell me, because I just lack what, what is, what's actual considered it, I guess, in normal terms as a capital investment. Commonly used. That is, that's the worst part, I guess, about. Like I would have came in and said, okay. It's pre-revenue, so if you can't make anything until you expense this stuff, then it must be a capital investment. That's where I kind of come from.
I mean, the way that we scored these is if the information was there, it was very subjective. If it was there, we awarded the points, but because this information was not there, we did not award the points. So that's how our committee interpreted it.
Okay. So that's where we remain is to whether we will accept this chart with your motion beyond the deadline based on the fact that they didn't realize that they needed to send something dollars. Can I get this? Thank you. So.
Are we ready for roll call vote then?
Is everybody ready for a roll call vote on that? Everybody understands what the motion was? Motion was to award one point based on $500,000 investment, based on the, the chart that I just.
Question, or do we say initial capital investment building? I mean, like if they want to plan to build the building, which is, you believe in building, you know, you know, costs over. Just wondering, do we say initial or does the fact they plan to build another building, does that come into play or not? Do they give us plans for that?
I would go with the initial because things could change in the future where they don't build it or build it, but initially, let's make this say not the findings, they have to spend this.
But, yeah, I don't think that are there initially, it doesn't add up to $500,000, not counting the four. So I'm just wondering what, looking at the entire plan someone has, someone building a new building, they gave us plans and said, oh, what's it going to cost? But, oh, they're, okay, that's their intention, there's no building there yet. We just have plans. So that's the question, if we can consider plans, that's, is that part of the verification process?
Rachel, can I just ask a question to clarify? So if, let's say that this information was in the application, all of that, in the application. So we didn't go through and say, yes, this is, you just said the information is here, this is the total, this is the total, I get the points. That's what you did.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if it was that simple.
Oh, well, nothing except for that.
And what I mean by that is. You know, some of the plans had stuff in there, and I think the committee did look through and try to establish that, that was at least that amount. You know, for instance, you know, some of the plans said they were going to build a new building, so Don, from his experience, kind of looked at, does that seem like a reasonable cost for new construction?
Right.
For what they're built. So, I mean, for example, if you, if you said, I'm going to build a, you know, a 10 by 10 building, you're going to pay a million dollars for it. It doesn't cost too many bucks to build a 10 by 10 building. So there had to be some logic between what they were suggesting and what they were built. And to say it costs this much. So if it's a role of $500, we got to make it a point. Yeah.
And that makes sense.
If I may, in the application, there is a proposed either renovation of, of the existing building and proposed building of a new facility. And the new facility is about 1.2 million for, for new construction. And that would be capital investment, that proposal is, if we go that route, that proposal.
Okay. Okay. One more clarifying question. So Danny had a question or put out there that according to applicants are allowed to submit additional information after the initial period, but we have a deadline on that. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly. When we set this up for applications, all information had to be submitted, including the deposit had to be postmarked by the date of our deadline. Correct. Correct. That's what we originally went on. Okay, I want to make sure I understand that because that's, it's a huge point because if we're going to accept a new information and base a vote off of new information. That's one way, but if we're basing it off deadlines of what we interpret that question to be, then, you know, I don't want to misunderstand it. And I, I guess I'll tell you. Just been thinking way too hard. But I'll tell you, I'm good. I'll tell you what, I'm going to, I'll play my cards before the vote because it's what we generally do sometimes anyhow. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to say, because once we vote, we really don't have an opportunity to talk about or vote. Because vote, it's done, we don't talk about it anymore. So. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I intend to vote in favor of Cindy's motion, and I'll tell you why, because she made some, some good points and Kevin made some good points. If you don't, and, and I can only go by what you said. And you're saying, you're telling me, and the three of you are telling me that, that you just didn't know that, that they wanted monetary values on, on, on some piece of paper when they sent that in. The appeals process does give an opportunity to present information. It's not. I'm going to, if I'm based on the fact that I'm going to believe that they didn't understand they had to send it, I'm not going to consider this as new information. I'm going to consider it as information that they had, they just didn't send it. And that's because I'm looking at it and I'm saying, okay, well, they did, they have all these plans, they have all of these things that we know that they have to, have to do in order to sell their first batch. So, and, and I guess the numbers make sense to me. I'm even going to say that if I were sitting on the committee and this was on time and it was in the packet and it had $100,000 of initial inventory, I'm going to, I'm going to consider that as a capital investment because if you don't have inventory, you're not going to sell anything. So you're investing in the first day you're going to sell something. I mean, up until then. You know, it's not, it's not an investment. So that's kind of where I'm at. That's where I'm at with it. And see, that was the reason for my, my question is on the appeal, because on the appeal, as I understood it, and that's why I'm clarifying it and maybe Bill can help you put interpretation is that the appeal was, was the. Was the score, the rubric scored correctly based on the information they had at that time? You know, was there maybe a point that was missed that they should have been awarded because they provided the information and the committee missed it so they could go to the appeal process? That's kind of where I'm at. And that's why I was asking, you know, for the clarification on what was read, because that's all I can do is I can't go off my opinion, I've got to go off of, okay, what was stated within that, that area. So that's, that's, I'm not trying to interpret, I'm trying to go based on what I'm reading in the application. And then, as far as the, the question goes, was a confusion? You know, for me, when it's, I said the attachment in the business plan, it's a detailed description of estimated capital investment. It's a detailed description of the estimated capital investment. And for me, that was the line that I think they should have spelled out a little bit more in monetary. And I think if you, you know, commonly go to common law or whatever, not even common law, I guess, Billy, you've used the term before, a reasonable, common explanation of capital investment, that's where I see that that detail should have been a little bit more in the monetary thing, you know? And so if we want to, if the appeals process is going to be one that we can look at the question and now we understand a whole bunch of different information. That's one route. You know, but the route that I understood, the appeal process is based on the information that they saw at that time, was the scored correctly. You know, and I think, in my opinion, just to explain, my vote is that based on the information that they saw at that time. I believe they scored that correct. You know, I don't think a point was missed based on the information that they had at the deadline, with the application deadline, so on, so. Those were the reasons I was asking those questions. And just so you understand exactly where I'm at. But, you know. Okay. So, goes on. Go ahead.
Can I ask, can I ask a question maybe, Bill, you can help me? Where does it say that in the appeals process? Where does it say anywhere?
That's why I said, you know, do, you know, within this, you know, that is my understanding of the appeals process was to interpret how this was scored. That's why I said, it's my opinion of it. If we as a council see it differently, I, I can score that easily as well. So that's my understanding of it, you know, so.
And everyone has to excuse us, this is our first time through this. We weren't.
We really did, yeah. We, we asked a lot of questions and we were trying, all of us were trying to pull up our memories of what we were talking about because we went through every evening that we could see and obviously couldn't foresee.
And we understood that, looking back on how you scored the application, it was, it could have been more concise, put in monetary value, but we're just asking to not be deducted for misunderstanding. We feel like we gave you the light bulb with everything, and now with the new information, all we're doing is simply illuminating it. It's the same light bulb, it's the same thing that was given, we're just simply illuminating things on it.
Okay. Bill, all right. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Potam Johnson? Yes. Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
No.
Mayor Walgore?
Hi.
And Councilman Hess?
Yes.
I should carry.
Sometimes there's, that's why they're trying by sentence, so we can interpret recording things. Thank you for the discussion. Okay, so someone made note, I don't know how we're, how we're doing that, but someone made note that that would be an additional point.
Plus one.
Yep, a plus one, and that would be under the capital investment of at least $500,000. Okay. Any motion for the second argument of capital investment of at least $900,000? Okay, now we will move on to your next section, I believe is under the economic impact.
Correct.
Please proceed.
Okay. So the next two possibly overlooked points were in section three of the economic impact, and it states the applicant proposes a living wage at least 200% of the federal poverty law level for a family of two at its hourly basis to all employees. We interpreted that question in the next slide. To simply propose a livable wage to our employees, although the exact scored rubric language was not included, we felt it sufficient to include our own language of a livable wage, and you can see that in our text. On page, right on the bottom. It says page 25.
Okay, thank you. On page 25 of the.
On page 25 of the application, it says, for all hourly employees, the following pay per hour shall be applied across the board and adjusted to meet or exceed 200% of the prevailing minimum wage. So in the scoring rubric, it asks for, we broke it down, a 1724 an hour. That is 200% above the federal poverty level for a family of two. That's what the rubric is asking. And with that highlighted area in the text, we are offering 1930 per hour. So that is actually $2.06 above the required basis set forth in the scoring rubric.
Okay. So the committee's response was. I think I'm in the right spot. The scoring matrix assigned one point if the applicant proposed a living wage at least 200% of the federal poverty level for a family of two at its hourly basis to all employees. This would mean that all employees must receive a wage of at least $34,480 or at least $16.57 per hour. The applicant's original application stated that 80% of the employees would receive over $15 an hour. It also stated that the first year employees would receive $15 for the first 90 days and $16.50 for the remainder of the year. The base salary pay scale also listed five positions below the 34480 required. Therefore, points were not awarded for proposing a living wage. The appeal states that the applicant intends to adjust the wages to 1930 per hour. So. I was trying to find it, but.
That's on page 25 of the application. 25 and 26. And if I could point out that we're looking at living wage and 200% of the poverty level and not minimum wage, prevailing minimum wages.
Okay. Yeah, that's where I had a lot of issues last night, not knowing kind of the difference or what they were. So the, so the committee had done the math that I just read. So they kind of knew what we were looking at. And in your initial. Compensation. Package. It's here, yeah, it's on page 25. First nine days, 15. Reminder of the year, 1650. Base salary pay scale. And there are. 34480. So there are obviously several that are going to. Base salary pay scale table, 10 to 31, choose patient services, education specialist, quality assurance specialist inventory, so bookkeeper, receptionist. So there's several on here that, that are gonna be, that would be under that. Wage. And. And it does specifically say all employees in the, in the initial application in order to be awarded two points for that. So how do you, so tell me again, I apologize so much.
Yeah, a lot of info. Yeah, a lot of time, yes. And thanks for going through it.
So if the. So knowing that there's, I guess now that there's a difference between, and I, and I understand everything in your application is to the best of my ability as far as how you figure for minimum wage and things of that nature. But the, but this outlined that at least 200% of the federal poverty level for a family of two at an hour, at its hourly basis. And their, their math says that that wage would have to be at least 34480 or at least $16.57 an hour. So tell me again what your argument is. If they were going by that standard and saw the information on your application, how would they score you a higher point?
Absolutely. Basically, what Rachel even pointed out was that they're looking for the federally, federal poverty level. And we included the minimum wage. And the minimum wage is actually above the federal poverty level. So in our statement, we, I, I know that there are, our, our salary wages in there that are below that threshold. But in our, the page 25 and 26, that highlighted portion, we do say we will adjust to meet or exceed 200% of the prevailing minimum wage. I, I understand, again, this is like our first time, you know, doing this. We understand it's confusing, but we do, as it says in the tax plan, to adjust to meet or exceed the needs for the application.
And I, and I get that. I mean, and I certainly appreciate that. But at the time of the application and at the time of, for what the, for what the committee had, they had the numbers that are on here. Again, it's, it's perhaps, I mean, that statement, that statement is from where? The highlighted statement?
Page, I think it's 25, our application.
Oh, and so it's on here?
Yes.
Oh. For all hourly employees, the following pay per hour shall be applied across the board and adjusted to meet or exceed 200% of the prevailing minimum wage. Again, the prevailing minimum wage. So how can, how, explain to me, I guess, somebody that knows stuff about wages, how does the prevailing minimum wage, 200% of the prevailing minimum wage come up to a, a number that's low, that's lower than what we're saying is 200% of the poverty level? Because that's what we're seeing, right? That's what I'm seeing. Am I crazy?
No, the, sorry, the prevailing, the minimum wage is actually above the federal poverty level. So in the actual appeal packet, I, and I, again, I understand it's dense and it's, it made it very difficult to answer all this. But in the actual appeal, I break it down, as the application states, we will meet or exceed 200% prevailing minimum wage. Then I go down to state the prevailing minimum wage. In Michigan, it's 965 per hour. 200% above that is 1930 per hour. In order to meet the application's scoring requirements, the applicant must propose a living wage, as you say in the application, 200% above the federal poverty level. 200% above the poverty level is 1724 an hour.
Okay.
And you're saying you will meet or exceed the 1930 hour, which was $2.06 above the requirement in the rubric.
I would read that section, no, to sit there and say, even in the first 90 days, that that, that number should have been your starting point, not $15 an hour.
Yeah, that's.
Looking for here is the fact that all employees have to start at that. And that's what they're looking to see in this situation here. So I, I don't see that, that number in this, the $15.
Yeah, this was our, this was our base that we were kind of setting off from at the beginning. And then we put in the meet or exceed 200% of prevailing minimum wage in order to meet the standards that ALPINA requires of us. So I, I know it's, it's almost contradictory in nature, but we meet or exceed 200% prevailing minimum wage and we adjust accordingly.
Well, in this case here, I'm not saying that you wouldn't, but to me, that's like, we will in the future, maybe build a building. Well, I'm looking at, this is what you're saying you're gonna do, but in the future, I may come up with this number.
Correct.
We're, they're looking, yeah, I assume on the, on the committee is, this is the minimum number you should have in there to start with. Because, you know, you may come up to it or you may not after the fact. And I'm not saying you wouldn't. In this situation here, I would look at that as being more concrete.
Okay. All right. Yeah, that's where I was, that's where I was when I was going over it last night was, and now I, I, now I was a little bit confused. Now I guess I'm, now I'm not as crazy as I thought I was. Like you're explaining something to me and I'm like, no, I'm looking at it and now. So what I'm looking at is, I mean, I looked at what I'm assuming is that the committee looked at. These are detailed, very detailed and specific. Jobs and very detailed and specific wages. And so I, I was taking it that, at that. And so I was trying to figure out how, how the committee got to its poverty level, but it did. It, it was fine. And so I just didn't, I didn't understand what your argument was, other than that statement that says that the wage scale for all hourly employees follow, the following pay per hour shall be applied across the board and adjusted to meet or exceed 200% of the prevailing minimum wage.
Prevailing wage typically refers to contractors.
Well. Yeah. Prevailing minimum wage. I kind of just, I left that whole prevailing word out and just said minimum wage because I'm not sure what, what's, what's meant by prevailing minimum wage. Do you just mean minimum wage? So that's what I took it as. Because I know what you mean. You mean if I'm doing a job for a contractor for the state, I get prevailing wages. So prevailing wages are different than prevailing minimum.
How does the committee know that doesn't mean?
Well, I guess it's a. Yeah, because I mean, and it, and it goes into, there was a statement, there was a statement somewhere else in the application that said that. I'm not sure where I read.
The 80%?
Yeah.
That's on, in the third paragraph on page 25.
Employees would receive over $15 per hour.
Yeah.
And that was another one of those moments where we were hoping that the statement of the 200% prevailing minimum wage would supersede all of that.
The question we keep looking at, prevailing minimum wage versus the federal poverty level, those are two different things. That's apples and oranges. We're looking at poverty level and not minimum wage.
Yes.
That's, that's where I, I.
And that's, I think, yeah, it's like a. The numbers we're putting forth are more than what's needed as far as when we state the 200% minimum wage. And when you're writing this, I, I think there's one of those misunderstandings of things and we're just hoping not to be penalized for a misunderstanding like this.
So it's directly in the application that you're looking for 200% of the federal poverty level. So if you Google that, the 2020 poverty guidelines for a two-person household is 17,240. You double that, that's 34,480, which is what we have in our comments. So that's the criteria that was set forth in the application in the rubric. So that's what we based our decision on in the, in the rubric for your scoring.
Yeah, and I just, I guess I just. I got, I got the last part on our last topic. I mean, I really, I think I got where you were coming from. On this one, I guess I'm just having a little bit of an issue with. Because there's so much information in here. It's kind of the opposite of the last one. There's so much information in here and it's all very detailed. And I, and, and if I was looking for a job, I mean, this is, you, you provide a great package. So the argument obviously isn't whether you're providing a great package and good salaries for what these people will, will be doing. But I, but I don't see that it's, I don't see that it's meeting what's necessary for the two points because it's very specific. At least 200% of the federal poverty level for a family of two at its hourly basis to all employees. And this is, I mean, this is so specific. And it even mentions ALPINA in here. Because at first I thought, well, maybe this is a block, maybe this is a cut pace because people, you know, you're gonna go all the, through a lot of different communities and so you'd be able to kind of cut pace. But this, this is very specific to ALPINA. But it never, and of all the wages and the salaries, and there's a statement in here that says the compensation refers to all forms of pay and rewards received by employees. But then, so I, I saw that and I thought, well, maybe is this number down here where it says wages, is that, is that number part of, part of their, their package kind of broken down saying, well, you know, we're gonna provide benefits and so those are worth, you know, $6 an hour, so that's gonna be in here? But I don't think there is. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this, these numbers that are in here seem like they're salary that they would actually receive in their paycheck, not minus what their vacation is worth and what their benefits are worth and things like that. So even going on that, it's just so detailed and I like that. I was like, wow, this is, I mean, this is really good. But to say that the committee would, would take all of these numbers and compare them to the numbers that they're using for, for being at least 200% above the federal poverty level and then say that there's, that they would be inclined to giving the two points based on, on a statement that's put in here that says for all hourly employees, the following pay per hour shall be applied across the board and adjusted to meet or exceed 200% of the prevailing minimum wage. I don't know. I, I guess if, if you're putting that much detail in it, why wouldn't you just put those numbers in there to begin with?
Because we understood it as a livable wage and we thought the livable wage, from our stance, would be actually $2.06 above what the actual rubric is asking us. And again, that was, as you can see with the amount of information, we thought more would be better. But it wasn't this case. But it doesn't negate the fact that we, we do state that it will be adjusted accordingly to meet or exceed the 200%.
What did you mean by adjusted? I guess, it'd be just, just a.
Yeah.
If you do the basic math and you divide it, even if you took the larger wage, which that doubled is larger than the, than 200, the federal poverty wage. And it says on an hourly basis, I guess, I wonder why wouldn't you just do that math and get to there? Because it says, that's the question.
Because, yeah, why wouldn't we match the actual question to worry?
Or even if you just did the minimum wage, why, why start at, say, $15 instead of 1930? It says on an hourly basis. It doesn't say in this whole package.
Because, yeah, 100% understand, I think that's where the misunderstanding comes in. We, so we have this standard operating plan written prior to the actual application of ALPINA. And so we gave you our standard operating plan as it was written. And then to accommodate the application, that's when we put in the 200% of the prevailing minimum wage. So again, it's one of those things in retrospect, we should have made it that difficult for the scoring committee to look at. And we apologize for all that. It was definitely a learning process, but we thought if you had more information, if you saw our standard operating plan, you would see that we are capable, we know what we're doing. And we are adjusting to meet or exceed what the application asks. And again, in retrospect, it, we should have done the math ourselves to you.
Chart itself with the 15, that is basically relevant to the wage scale, which you said minimum wage, which in Michigan's minimum wage is 945. So that means it's a. Oh. This is, that's wrong or it moved off the. So 965 times two, which does exceed, I don't know. So you said it, but then you just confused everybody with putting the, putting turn in.
And I, that's where I understand the, and again, it's, I, we're just asking to not be penalized for misunderstanding. And that's where the appeal comes into play.
We don't say that they make twice 200% of the minimum wage.
And we're adjusting the standard operating procedure for the application. Again, it's.
From, from committee's standpoint.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm trying not to throw myself in the middle of it, make arguments, but you, you have to disregard all the rest of page 25 and half of page 26 and say, committee should have just pulled that one sentence out and said that meant that they were gonna pay $19.30 per hour, because that's not what this says. I mean, I don't.
Right.
I know that's what the argument is, but I mean, they're saying that for the first 90 days, people are gonna make $15 an hour. They say at least 80% will be paid at $15 an hour above, presumed with the other 20 gotta be paid less than that. They've got specific rates for specific jobs that are less than 200% of the federal poverty level. And so that's what the committee was looking at. That's why they didn't get points.
So we have a, um, uh, consultant that works with us and he unfortunately cannot be here tonight. And we were wondering if it's possible to overgo to meeting, uh, have him weigh in briefly on this point?
I don't, I don't know. I guess let's let the, let's let the discussion proceed for a minute, uh, just to see if that's necessary.
Okay.
Um, I just, I'm gonna do, I'm just doing, I'm not texting someone, I'm just doing some calculations. Good thing you have a later, I know the rules of being in here. I just wanted to do, um, some calculations.
And if I may real quick, I just go back to the argument I made before. They're making, you know, they stated they're gonna adjust 200%, and again, they're accessing it at the end. And I would argue, my attorneys probably know this, when I file a witness and exhibit list, I list witnesses, but I also reserve the right to amend. This is what they're stating here. They stated those numbers, but they're going to meet or exceed 200%.
That doesn't make sense to me, but let me, that's a, the council just decided, because I mean, once again, we got a page and a half of information that all pretty specific about what we're gonna pay people, what we're gonna pay for the first 90 days, what we're gonna pay for the rest of the year. What our total amount is that we're gonna pay these particular positions. Uh, and then to say, but what we meant was we're gonna adjust 200%. I just, I mean, you gotta look at it from a committee's standpoint. What we, committee, we just to say. And I know they're, you know, they're giving an explanation that, you know, maybe they put too much information in on this one, but I don't think you get, you know, you could say, well, we didn't put enough in on this one, that's what we meant. Put too much on this one, that's not what. You know, it just doesn't.
I'll make counter to that real quick. I would agree if, if this was in the appeal and not in the application, but it's in the application. So that's where I would, I would make the argument that, that's where it succeeds. If this wasn't in the application and just in the appeal, then yes, but it's in the application.
But that's, that's, I'm trying not to get argument, argumentative. The other stuff wasn't in the application. And why the council would take it? So the council said, well, that's not, that number's not in there, but we'll give you a point, because now that you pointed out, you give us more information. Now what they're saying is we'll take away a lot of the information we gave you and just focus on the one that's there. You know, you gotta, you gotta, once again, look at it from a committee's standpoint. What, what would one of these committee members have read this to me other than what it says? That is, we're gonna pay 80% of our employees at least $15. That's not enough?
Not enough, at least $15.
Yeah, but that's, you gotta pay all the employees at least 200% of the federal poverty. They gotta pay all of your employees at least $34,480. You've got a set of employees here that multiple numbers, although they're not making that. And that's, that's, you know, that's their numbers. That's not anything that's being added up by the city or by the committee. I mean, some of these say based on third-party rate. I mean, fairness to them, those aren't really, and CPA consultants, I, I don't think what the city was looking for is far as the CPA, I think what they were looking for is the people that are gonna be in there inside the place work. And as to those folks that are inside the place working, many of them, you know, don't get to that, that $34,480 front of them.
Next thing that I looked at off here, it came going back towards the fact that it was very specific on what if we wanted, how much it wanted. Really, I don't see it as, uh, specific to interpretation, I select here. The factor that it also stated that all the employees must reach that, and that wasn't stated here, here as well. With your, uh, information here, it said the first 90 days at $15 an hour, with the remainder of one year 1650. Whether, if you plan to meet or exceed it, you should have already stated that you're gonna be above this number, period. Cut out the confusion about it for whoever may read it. We plan on meeting or exceeding this amount, monetary amount, period. And then that be figured in then to the point system. But this, I, again, look at this and you're not, uh, meeting that point.
Even though the above statement above all that does state that we will exceed the 200% and we will adjust so.
I can have that, uh, uh, brought back to the point of, well, we may build a new building. But we have to have the concrete in here to start with. That's all I'm looking at here. And it's not that hard to, to just put those numbers in there. That's what they asked for on the application. So if you know that you can pay that, then put it in. Okay? If you can't run off of that, then you have to realize that there's a possibility that you're gonna lose a point on that. Okay? That's all.
Okay.
And that's just, yeah. Because we have to, if, if other folks, uh, other applicants can put that information in there, then you should be able to as well.
And that's why I'm here appealing that, because we did feel we can do that. We can financially do that. We can give that to our employees. And although it wasn't stated explicitly like that, I completely understand what you're saying. I'm here appealing the fact that we can do that. And even though it is a single sentence, it is in there. And I'm appealing that we, I think those, those two points should be on our scoring rubric for us. And I understand the confusion, but again, I, I keep going back to the reason for this appeal for us is that we don't want to be penalized for a misunderstanding.
And I, I guess here's where I am so far. Like I said, I s- I scored this last night as if I were on the committee and I didn't give the two points. I didn't give the two points because I went over these numbers that, that you provided like 10 times, trying to figure out what I, what, what I wasn't seeing, um, that you were seeing. And again, I didn't have the, I didn't have the committee's response yet. So I was just trying to figure out what, what I wasn't seeing. Um, I, if you had, if you had put that in the appeal, I even missed that in the appeal, that sentence. I, I, I didn't. I was reading the thing, seeing that there was an argument that, that you were going to exceed what the application was looking for. I went through it several times. I, I went through all of these wages. I even thought that at one time you were saying that, that the benefits would push you over the top. So I read that, that, that section two or three times. It's very detailed. Everything's very detailed and I still want to have given you the two points. So I would, I have, I'd have to say that if I were on the committee and that's kind of what I'm doing now, I guess, is, is listening to where you're at and then, but also listening to what, why the committee made the, the decision they did and I just wouldn't.
We understand why, yeah, the committee made the decision, but again, that's why we are appealing that.
And I understand.
Yeah.
And the sentence is in there. It's in there, but I know, because that's exactly what I was coming up with too, is I've seen the exact numbers. You know, and if we're to, when you see something like this on an application and you say, it's, as Dan said, well, we may build the building, so go ahead and give me the points. You know, it's, we have to go off of what we see that is in front of us, you know?
Yeah.
And, and that's, the committee as well has to do that. They, they can say, oh, he, he said he would make it, you know, he, he, you may get this place to 200%. You know, but you've got stated down here for the first 90 days, all your employees are gonna get $15 an hour, which is, you know, reading over business plans and such, this is what you would see. You know, this, you're, you're laying out the details of how I'm gonna run my business.
Okay.
Yeah. Exactly. And so it has to be this detail, you know, do you get financing and such? And, and it's laid out just like that. But if you were to say to a bank, you know, and, and say to them, well, we may pay it more. You know, they'd be like, well, we want details of what you're gonna do. We wanna see the details. And I think you did a great job in, in doing that. But to receive a point, that's exactly what they did, is they run off the details. And so my interpretation of that, um, we can't just take the one session, uh, the one section. We, we have to take the whole thing and the details are exactly what we're looking at here too. So I too went through and was looking at the scoring and tried to figure out, you know, what may have been missed by the committee. I didn't see it either. I didn't see the two points.
And that's why we were hoping the first sentence would supersede the others.
I understand your point.
Yeah.
Yep.
So the employees of the facility don't need to make a certain amount. It's just, are you going to? I mean, you could pay them minimum wage, right? There's nothing that says they have to get a certain amount. Right? But we're basing, we're giving points based on what our recommendation is. It's not, I don't think we said you have to pay them this.
What was in the rubric? Yes, that's how you get the points is you.
Right.
Do what you, right, what was in the rubric.
But if they only wanna pay a minimum wage, which they can, right?
Correct.
Then they just don't get the point.
They just don't get the points. That's correct. So when you review this in an application process, you'd say, okay, for them to make a profitable business, you know, this is what they have to do for the first 90 days. This is what they have to do for the next, because they've read the numbers, they understand the market, and this is what they're putting down, which is that those numbers don't add up to, you know, what is gonna be, you know, to get the points in the rubric. And that's kinda how I'm, I'm looking at it, just saying, okay, what points were missed?
So is there any member of the council that sees that there was something that was missed based on the information? Is there any motions that would be put forth?
I'm just gonna say, I see a pro place. I see what the committee struggled with. But I also see that they, that they put adjusted to meet or exceed. But the, the numbers that we put in here don't help your argument, because you know, that this is what the committee looked at. So.
Again, again, even very beginning, it just says more times than, than one time you said contrary evidence, you know, that base are above 150% of the Michigan state wage. So that's 14 some dollars. And then later you said, at least 80% will pay at least 15 or above. So you're officially saying, no, I don't meet this requirement. You know, several times within the two pages. So it's, I guess it's hard to discount that you keep saying that. And there is a one line that says you will, but then there's three or four other spots that say you won't meet that requirement of all employees getting that wage. So I guess, I guess I wonder why not just change your page and that, that was on you to present that information, really. I, if you, what you meant, it's not what it shows.
I, I think that's where the, again, that, I mean, I apologize for repeating myself. I just, I think that's where the misunderstanding was of it all. And I, I write a certain way where we give you more information. Again, it will show you that we are ca- more than capable. And I'm here in front of you appealing it that we do have it. It is there. And I know there is, it seems contradictory, but we're hoping that, that first statement above all else will supersede everything. And why we didn't put it in there, because that was our basic first standard operating plan and our payment methods. And looking back, yes, we, we should have made it simpler to digest. And I, I apologize greatly for that. And that's why I'm, I'm here appealing it for that misunderstanding.
Because even in the first paragraph, though, in the first paragraph, it specifically states that it's not gonna meet this requirement. You wrote there. I mean, if someone did, it is, so why didn't, I guess, why, so see, why you moved it just that? For, and it's, you understand it's fitting for people.
Yeah, and that's, I guess.
That's the 80% portion.
Well, that, and, and that applies at a base of above 150% of the Michigan statement of wage, which that's $14 and change, 150%. I'm just saying in several spots, you just make a point that those, the first three, you know, paragraphs, you point out that, no, they're not gonna make that much. And that's fine if that's what you're gonna pay, but that's before we even get to the, the bottom part.
Yeah, those statements are just as matter of fact as the one that you're arguing. That's the issue that I have. It's, it's matter of fact. That's where it was. You can't discount one.
Yeah.
When you look at, I take them all. We projected at least 80% of our employees who we paid $15 an hour or above. The average income, and then you went into the average income of Alpena residents, 19,297 a year. It's all very detailed and matter of fact. And it wasn't so, um, I mean, we're gonna argue that, that your projection that 80% of the employees we paid $15 an hour above is just as matter of fact and just as important as for all hourly employees the following pay per hour will be applied across the board and adjusted to meet or exceed 20%. What it, I mean, that's after you've already stated that they're gonna be, that 80% or at least 80% will be paid $15. So it's just, and then it goes into, after that, it goes, everything else drops back down to that, that initial, that initial statement. So that's, that's where I'm at. That's just.
The 80% was for myself. As an owner, I, I just, I think I've been making that much money. So that's, I, I put myself in there. And I, again, it was that the misunderstanding of it.
I see.
I, as the owner, as the operator, oh, I did not think I would be an employee, so I put the 80% in.
Okay, Mike asked for a motion. I did. Thank you. I mean, why not?
Yeah.
And I hadn't, I hadn't heard a response, so I'll ask again. I guess is there a, a motion to?
And I hadn't, I hadn't heard a response, so I'll ask again if, yes, is there a, a motion to amend the, the com, the committee's decision on that one? Okay, hearing done, we'll have to move on. Are we too? So that was economic impact. We are now, we are now to the, I believe, the final argument of building and deciding neighborhood enhancement.
Yes.
We're ready.
So, right, so the last two are in section four, the building design neighborhood impact. First point is applicant proposes to construct a new facility, that is two points. And the other one is applicant makes commitment to specific neighborhood improvements through elimination of light on site or adjacent property. First one, applicant proposes to construct a new facility. To get the full eight points of section four, you needed to propose a new construction and propose to renovate an existing building. And we do that in the actual application on, on the next slide, page, hopefully it'll show what page it is. No, if you cut it off. Was it 92?
93.
Okay, 93, thank you. We state that neighborhood provisions proposing to both use and renovate the existing building and construct a new facility. In the current beginning phases of the buildout, it's still in consideration as to which proposal would better suit the operations of our business to serve our patients. So in the actual application, we both propose to construct a new facility and propose to renovate the existing facility. And this one, we did contact a city official and they, they told us to propose to do both for the total of eight points for that section.
So the response from the committee. So the, the scoring matrix assigns two points if the applicant proposed to construct a new facility. The original application stated the following, as the building, as the building at 120 South Ribley Street is of good standing and structure and at the same time may not be best equipped to handle the capacities of a retail dispensary. Neighborhood provisions is proposing to both use, use and renovate the existing building and construct a new facility, although only one proposal will be implemented. And I, I, I'm in quotes from the thing. In the current beginning phases of the buildout, it is still in consideration as to which proposal would better suit the operations of our business to serve our patients. Here we are submitting the following layout as a visual descriptor of both our proposed renovation and new construction. And then, end of quote. The application then stated, quote again, see below pages for visual, visual descriptor, end of quote. However, the only visual descriptor included was the attachment titled, propose to use existing building or structure, end of quote. The three pages of this attachment all apply to use of the existing building. No plans for the new building were included in this section, therefore no points were awarded for the, for constructing a new facility. The scoring matrix assigned two points if the applicant made a commitment to, oh, I'm sorry, that was, go and sit to the next one. So that's, that's where the committee was with constructing the new building.
Can I ask for clarity?
Um, yes.
Uh, it said it did not receive, I think?
It says the applicant then said it's see below for visual description. However, the only visual descriptor included was the attachment titled, propose to use existing building or structures. The three pages of the attachment all apply to using the existing building. No plans for a new building were included in this section, therefore no points were awarded for construct new facility.
So there was no new plans attached to that?
No, not in the one I see.
Not in the one, okay.
No.
That must have been lost in Cypress face then, because this is first I'm hearing that we did not.
Oh.
And there's included and it should have been in there.
There's, uh, because it's page, so 98.
These were delivered as hard copies, so.
I'm just looking to see if there's pages missing. So.
The, if, if it was for the proposal of the new construction, that was an additional attachment.
Oh, okay.
The, the way the plans, the way our tech drew the plans, it was impossible to put them on the actual application. So we, I, I thought attached them, you said hard copy?
We received these two, well, we, we received two copies of the application hard copy.
And they, they were not in there?
Um, not that we could see. And that was supposed to be attachment two. I can show you what I have here.
Now, i, i, you said there's, there was no attachment two?
Um, not that I can see. This one has the, um, the blue building and, um, a chartboard.
So I have attachment two here, and I know this is, going back to the first one, the additional information, if it was not in fact included. But this is the first I'm hearing about it. I don't know if that's part of it, where if something is unclear, to reach out to the applicant. But I've tried and stopped, I'm trying to like reword things in my head. The application rubric states that we simply propose and a, and we do that in text form. We do propose to both of those things in text form. So even if there is a missing attachment, the proposal is still in the application.
I have a question for clarity.
Yeah.
Would you propose to do one or the other, or are we doing both?
It is still too early to decide. We don't know right now, and that's why we did propose to do both.
Okay. Because in order to get the points for both, you would have to do both. That's how we interpreted this.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, so, so we, we kind of made this.
Yeah.
All of us together.
Yes.
It was longer than this night once, I can tell you that. It was much longer than this night. So, so when I was, so I, so the intent of this was to say, you know, are you proposing to use, to use an existing building or structure? Because then obviously you're going to see some improvements to the building, more than likely, because we don't have any dispensaries here, so you're going to have all that security and stuff that you're going to put into it. Or are you proposing to construct a new facility? And, and the possibility that there would be both, at, both at the same time. But we know, sitting here, that it's, it's, it's difficult, I'm not going to say it's impossible. It's very difficult for me to, you, you were very clear in your, in, in your whole, in your write-up here, that, that you're going to, you're going to renovate the, the property first and get running. And everything is in here on how you're going to set it up and everything is there, right down to pots and plants. It's great. So, so knowing that, that, that property, I don't understand how you would be able to, how you would be able to run an operation and, and build a new building at the same time.
Interesting.
That property is, it'd be different if there was a field next door or the property had acreage or, or a huge parking lot. But, but this property, you would have to, if I understand correctly, you would have to completely cease all operations in this building. And so therefore make no money off of, off of a provisioning center, cease operations long enough to build the structure that, a new structure that you're playing.
I, I understand what you're saying. And we are going off what the sworn rubric says, which it just states propose. It doesn't say anything about having shut down for a certain amount of time, the amount of space that is needed, when it will be proposed, if it'll do one or the other, and you'll do both of them. We're simply, it's simply saying that you need to propose them. And we did get clarity from a city official on this, and they said if you propose both, you will get both.
I don't know if you know what that was then.
Okay.
I mean, I get, I get, I mean, I get that, but I guess I'm still going to fall back. And anybody here can correct me if I'm wrong, because you were all here as well and helped write this. But if, we might as well give, had given everybody on, everybody that applied could have, could have gotten that two points just by proposing that they were going to build a new build. I mean, I get your argument, because I'm a, I'm a letter guy, letter to the letter. I found some other things in here that I wouldn't have given you points for, but it's not arguable because, because it's not part of your appeal, unless you're going to appeal that you got two points. Because, so, because I'm a letter to letter guy, I like to try to do that. But in this case, I get that, that it says that the applicant propose, proposes to construct a new facility. But we're all, but, but I think from my perspective, we were expecting that, that the applicants that could realistically do that and run a business at the same time would be, would get, you know, get points for that. Yes, sir.
If, if, I mean, are you, are you saying that the building would have part of it built for a permit stone? Because I, I can tell you, testifying at one in the lawsuit that was in township, they obviously don't do the build out until they actually get the permit, because then we have an issue of that.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not. I don't think I'm saying that. What I'm saying is that, is that at this particular location and, and the entire, everything that you're proposing to do, which is to start, it says right here, propose to use existing building and structure. And it, and it said in a couple of different spots that that was your, your plan was to start the business in the existing renovated building and then a proposal to later build a new structure. I'm just asking realist, of course you can propose that and be part of, be part of what the application is asking for. But, but the intent and the reality of actually doing that, I don't understand how you would. The only way I can see that done, again, is to completely cease operations for the entire time that the new building was going to be built. Because there isn't, explain to me how there's room to be, to do both.
Well, and, and that's again, what we're saying, we're not explaining that, we're simply proposing it. We're simply following the language that was given to us.
So I get, yeah.
And that's, yeah.
Well, I get it.
Again, a finding point of view in the situation that by the site plans, by the ordinances, the other things like this that we have laid out, and even the setbacks, it's like just to put a building in, to have the route of parking that is required and have the setbacks requires like this, that lot is not big enough for a sufficient building to be put in there. That's the reason he's sitting there saying that the only way that you could do so in the future is to tear that building down existing right now.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if that's, if that's where you have the, the business, then you won't have a business if you have to tear that building down. Where you see him saying that.
I, yes, I do. And again, I, we weren't following the procedures. It wasn't stated that we need to lay out a procedure for this, we just simply need to propose. And again, when we asked for clarity for this, we were told to propose both. We did so, and now we are penalized for following rules on that.
Mayor, would you like to allow Don Gilman, who is on our meeting, to respond to that?
Yeah, I guess though, because that way we're not a he said, he said.
Right.
And he's with us?
Yeah, this is Don. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. I talked to like probably six different applicants. I do remember talking to Kevin and Andrew and all, all the different people involved. So if you ask me, how do you get the maximum points? I'm going to tell you, you have to renovate an existing building and propose to build a new one. That's what I told everybody. Now that being said, there's a lot, I mean, I don't design a project for someone. I review plans when they're brought to me. And of course, in this case, I haven't seen any plans for a building permit. But if you want to get maximum points, then you would, you could leave part of the building that's there and then you would build your new building in the front or the side, however it works with zoning and parking and everything else that's involved. And that would be before you open. There is one applicant that got the points for doing both. It's all going to be done before they open. And so I don't think the intent to give the two points was, well, you know, maybe three years from now, we outgrow our building, so we build a new one. That's just business. One, one would expect their, a business person to fit their, their requirements at the time. But that's not how the scoring rubric was set up out of the gate. That's all I, I mean, unless there's a specific question, that's all I've really got to say about it.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. The original application stated the following, as the building in 120 South Ribley is of good standing and structure and at the same time remain, it may not be best equipped to handle the capacity of a regional dispensary. Neighborhood provisions is proposing to both use and renovate the existing building and construct a new facility, although only one proposal will be implemented. In the current beginning phases of the buildout, it is still in consideration as to which proposal would be better suited to operations of business, certain patients here. We are submitting the following layout as a visual description of our, both our proposed renovation and new construction. You should state it to see below pages for visual description. It's fine, it's fine. I'm not going to get stuck on the fact that it wasn't in there. That's a.
Oh, okay.
I'm not, I just don't want to get stuck on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I get your argument. I get it. It's a letter to the, it's letter to the law. Followed the thing that just says to propose, that you propose to build a new building. But with everything else that you, that you had stated previous to the, I got, I kind of, I got that too as far as, you know, you've, you signed an affidavit at the bottom saying that you're going to do everything that you said that you're going to do with this whole, in this whole package. I, it, so, so you're, you're either. And then it contradicts saying that. That, that you contradict yourself by saying, although only one proposal will be implemented, which is to use the, the facility that's there now. And I get, and I get that. It's just, I mean, when I look at, and I've been in these, so, you know, and, and so yours looked a lot like the ones that I've been in before. You have a waiting area, you have sales, you have receipts, you have all the security, you have fulfillment. There's all of these very specific things that you have to go through just to get in the building itself. I can't see, I can't, I guess I just can't see doing what Don had suggested as far as at some time in the future, you'll, you would be able to consolidate that into a portion of the building in order to, in order to build a new building. So I understand and I get it that you followed the letter of the, of, of the application by proposing a new building. But the intent was, is it reality? And, and you, and if you've signed this saying that you, well, you proposed it, but it's not, but, but it's, but it's not really, we were looking for something that was more reality, like you're, you're proposing it. Of course you're proposing it. A proposal is something that you're going to do.
Yeah.
And I just, I guess I'm not convinced that, that there's going to, that, that you're going to build a new building there one day. I'm just.
I think as we're in.
I can't say you're not.
Yeah.
Because you can't say you're not either, you know what I mean?
And because the rubric doesn't state that we need to do one or the other or both.
Yeah.
And if that was clear as I'm appealing this, I, I, I hope I'm making it clear that me being here, I'm, we were willing as a company to do what is needed in the rubric. And we are stating that we are willing to propose both as seen in the rubric. And if the rubric stated, you need to do one or the other, you need to do one then the other, you need to do, you propose this then that, we would be willing to do that as well, as directed by someone. I guess for me, I'm, I'm reading this over and I made the point on the other two things. It's that, you know, you were scoring off of what we had in front of us. Okay? And I'm reading this over and, and I do see on here where it says applicant proposes. It says applicant's plan details, economic benefits. I'm in that section, applicant proposes using the existing. Okay? And then the next section says applicant proposes to construct a new facility. While it may not be realistic, the rubric does not.
While it may not be realistic, the rubric does not say and or, you know, in my mind. So as I'm reading it, and Bill, please correct me if I'm wrong, I'm asking you that directly. When I read that, those points, even though are intent, like I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that during that was there you're going to reuse a building and or, you know, they're going to do that. The rubric does not say that for scoring. So it's hard for me to sit back and say, I'm not going to give you the additional points because it doesn't say that on here, that you're either going to do that. It says, as as, you know, he stated applicant proposes to use an existing building or structure, which he is proposing. But I think as he goes through his business plan, it says the applicant proposes to construct a new facility. I mean, so he is proposing both with the with the line that basically is saying, I'm going to look at this. I'm going to see if this is going to work for me. I've got plans, and it looks like it's going to, you know. But it doesn't say and or. Which, again, we just talked about, you know, for myself, like yourself, Mr. Mayor, it is, you know, to the letter, those two words are not in there. It's just saying propose. So based on that, from what I'm seeing, you know, those points could be awarded based on, because he is proposing both, because let's say he gets in and says, I'm going to use the existing facility. Wow, my business really took off, but I'm proposing a new one. It's not an end or. Those words were in there. This would be a different thought in my mind, you know. And Bill, am I interpreting that correctly according to how you understand this section?
Well, it's going to start out to be arguing for one side of the other.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, you got the letter of the law, the spirit of the law added, and that's easy. You know, he's a tax guy, you know, what what did this mean? And I think what it meant is if you build a new building, you're going to get two points. If you're staying in the other one, you're going to get one. Getting a new building, you get two points. You don't get the other one.
That's not the case, I believe, because I might say an actual building, if you're heading on to a building, that's, I think, that's what I'm saying. So I, you got to take that into consideration, too.
I'm just, yeah, that's just how I'm interpreting it. I'm asking, and I'm asking Bill.
But getting lost in meetings of words sometimes. Proposes versus proposal. This this is a proposal. What is your proposal? Your proposal to use an existing building or is it to construct a new one? Which one do you propose to do? I mean, I I read this as they're going to use the existing building.
Yeah.
And then they they put a section near with the existing building. He's got the plans to show what they're going to do now. They didn't have the other attachment. I don't, I mean, I don't think that's fatal to anything. And I understand, obviously, Kevin talked with Don, and I think Don stole what he just said. He told him and other applicants that if you want to get the maximum points, you got to use something that's there and build something there. You also have to look at, can you do that for that site? I mean, each site is different. If it has room there to build another, I don't think you could build on that site without tearing that building down. I mean, I don't even know if you get on to it. Not sure if there's enough room there. I don't I don't know. I mean, I guess I don't want to make statements that I don't know about, but I mean, if the building's kind of tucked in there, I'm not sure how pleased that lot is, if there's other buildable traits there or not. You know, once you get, put yourself into the committee, how would the committee have read this application? Would they have read this application that he's going to build a new facility or would they have read that they're going to renovate what's there and use that? So that they scored one point for the existing facility. And even though they said they proposed it again, I mean, although only one proposal will be implemented.
But both were proposed.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. There's nothing in the text that says implementing it's.
Well, I I think it's also though, and I guess I'm going to get a little bit here. I think it's, let me try to grab as many points as I can by making alternative proposals, even though this is what my proposal. Proposal isn't to build a new building. Not what they proposed for that licensing. It's it's clear when you look at this, the proposal that they're going to renovate with it. Somewhere down the line, they might build a new building. I mean, I guess everybody could have said that.
Yeah.
One, two, but.
Well, I guess that's been my argument, that every applicant could have proposed something that they may may do down down the line. And we don't always know. From from my perspective, if I were doing this, I would probably done exactly what you did, to be honest with you. Want to get every point you can get, so you do it. So you do everything that it says. But there's always an intent to everything, even laws, you know. I get pulled over at some point. There's there's intents of laws where the spirit of the law. Spirit of the law is a little bit different, and you know, that we have letter of the law officers and we have spirit of the law officers. And and they differ from time to time. But but when you go back and they've been brought to council before, and when those get back brought all the way back to council, especially when we were talking about the trucking thing, we we dissected a lot of times, what what was the intent? Why did we make this? Why did we do this in the first place? What was the intent? Now, granted, the people driving around don't always know what the intent was. Like someone that's applying for this, they may or may not know what the intent was, so let's propose it so we can get the points. But the committee knew what the intent was, and they said, okay, they did propose, even though they didn't have, you know, the attachments. It it's there's a there's a very, there's a brief narrative that says that in the future, we may outgrow the facility and we might build. Might build that every one of them. That that could be the case on everybody's, but the intent was, does the are you going to use use an existing building? One point. Use a construct a new facility? Two points. It's just more because there's more to it. Obviously, there's more to it, so more points i- if you're going to build a new facility, because then you're going to be, you know, everything that goes along with it. Permitting process is more so that, you know, what the, you know, what the community gets back. So I'm going to, I'm just still going to stick with with what the intent was, and it's just not in here. I get it. You did it. I would have, but I wouldn't have given me the points.
Well, when we asked for clarity on the spirit of the law, on the intent of it, we were told what to do. We did what was told. And when we're asked about, you know, the feasibility of a site plan, a site plan was not asked to be put in or not asked to survey. You were not asked to have the actual visual descriptors that we included. You were not asked to do that. So to say that you would, you know, have to shut down business, you'd have to have site surveys, you had plans, all that, yes. But again, when we asked for clarity, that was not given to us.
Right, and we did what we were told. Yeah, and we did what we were asked by a city official as well.
Can I ask a question, Kevin?
Yeah.
This one, there is the more pages at the end here. Is this the new construction or the renovation? I know they said it wasn't on there, but I just want to make sure down there that they're they're comfortable. As it says, it doesn't have an attachment to, but this is a.
Yeah, so that's the renovate. Okay. Oh, that's no, that's attachment two then. Yep, so that's the proposed construction of the facility. Then it should be.
Is that at the end of your agreement?
Yeah, it's it's on the end.
It's on the end, and I'm sorry if it wasn't.
Does it say attachment two or anything?
It it doesn't, but that's why I asked, because it's it says attachment H four and then one. We probably put it at the very end of the application we're given. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Then it says attachment one. And then it says on the left, it doesn't say attachment two. I just wanted to make sure that.
That that is the attachment two.
It's not marked.
That is, okay, I apologize.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, and that was the actual application.
Yeah.
Okay, so it wasn't there. Okay. Thank you.
So it's not marked attachment two, but it's just like there is.
Which which what does that look like?
The first page is the renovation.
Okay.
And then there's a couple of pages afterwards. And it looks like the floor design is different than the renovation floor design.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Or through reading or anything. But I will again ask if there was anyone that would like to make a motion to award those two points that the that the committee did not, and that would be after applicant proposes to construct a new facility.
Is it to, just to clarify what they found, that there was a a architectural site plan for a new building in the application that was given?
Okay. Everyone understood that? Okay, seeing none, we'll have to move on. Next, I believe, is the applicant makes commitment to specific neighborhood improvements through elimination of light onsite or adjacent property. Am I am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's the. Okay, applicant make commitment to specific neighborhood improvements through elimination of light onsite or adjacent property. So our interpretation of that was, as the current building has been vacant for a while, we feel it's efficient with visual drawing, proposed renovation, construction, and the positive economic impact the business will have on the surrounding area for light onsite for the adjacent property. Then the text, we have it broken down into three different parts. First part is the design and renovation were the highlighted part in what, sorry, what page was that on?
Seventy seven.
Seventy seven. It says neighborhood provisions has given thoughtful consideration to its community context in relation to the design and renovation of the facility at 120 South Ripley Boulevard. In its facility's design, neighborhood provisions principles will pay careful attention to the aesthetic of their buildings, the cleanliness of their grounds, and security of the facility as a whole. Neighborhood provisions will renovate the existing building for its facility, and in this process, will also make a special effort to minimize any impact these activities may have on their neighbors. Light onsite or adjacent property. Second point on the next slide. Litter control, we talked about. We would have exterior litter and sanitation protocols. We plan to proactively address litter and debris that could negatively lead impact Ripley Street and the area light onsite or adjacent property. We will support municipal and community initiatives to help address this in addition to a step being tested with hourly monitoring of our parking lot, rear and side of the building to collect and remove litter debris, which light onsite or adjacent property. And the final point. With landscape maintenance, NP or neighborhood provisions, this is on page, I'm sorry, keep.
Eighty six.
Eighty six. On page eighty six, we talk about landscape maintenance, which again, will eliminate light onsite for our adjacent properties. We will have a buffer between the sidewalk and the store for its security, beautification of the area, and mitigation foot traffic to the parking area. NP, again, neighborhood provisions, will place planters to delineate the separation of the public sidewalk and the parking area while also beautifying the current area. NP will also create a light plan that will illuminate the parking lot and surrounding sidewalks to enhance the pedestrian experience. These points culminate in elimination of light onsite or adjacent property.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And I'd just like to make a statement, and I've been on, I was on planning commission for quite some time. But an empty building for several years in itself is a blight for the neighborhood. To have somebody purchase it and want to do something with it and put a business in it eliminates that blight for the neighborhood.
Does, and I guess that's, let me, before we go too far, let me read the comments from the.
Sure.
Okay. The scoring matrix is matrix assigned two points if the applicant made a commitment to specific neighborhood improvements through elimination of light onsite or existing property. No points were awarded for this item. The appeal reference section H one and H three stating, starting on page seventy nine, the applicant describes an employee volunteer program, educational sessions, economic development activities, investment in the community organizations, mentoring opportunities, cross promotional marketing activities, impact on law enforcement, excuse me, and complaint handling. While these things are very are all very important and they should be commended for these plans, they do not specifically address blight on the site or adjacent property. On page eighty two, subsection D, the applicant addresses how they will handle handle litter control under product contamination prevention. On page eighty six, subsection G, the applicant addresses how they will handle landscape maintenance. The subcommittee felt that neither addressed the intent of eliminating blight on the site or adjacent property. So I'll go ahead. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, that was my question, because they're saying blight, you know, Cindy gave a, I believe, an interpretation of a building being empty is considered blight within a neighborhood.
For several years.
For several years. Yeah, it just got empty. It's not blighted yet, but it's not going anything, and now the maintenance isn't happening and so on, so.
Absolutely, not into a neighborhood, whether it's a business or a resident.
Okay.
Okay, and then, you know, to me, in my mind, in my interpretation, that's why I was looking for a, you know. It says right here at the very beginning, one of the things I was reading. Scoring matrix assigned two points if the applicant made a commitment to a specific neighborhood improvements through elimination of blight onsite or an existing property. So the elimination of blight. So first, we have to determine if that particular property was blight. You know, that would be the first thing, because by purchasing the building, did he eliminate the blight or is he fixing up the exterior? Is that a limit? Is it a blight property? You know, I guess for for me, that's I need a little bit better definition. Anna, are you already on it?
It's available to to talk, to speak the blight.
A specific definition wasn't provided as far as what blight is. Did you live up to Mary Webster? It's deteriorated condition. I mean, it can be, there are other definitions depending on which reference you're using, but a definition was not provided specifically. So I I mean, deteriorating condition. And the one thing that's jumped out to me is that the other points of the thing, say, to make improvements and to keep up the lawn. This one says a specific commitment to actions, and that and that to me is different. It's not just like fixing. It's making commitment to the maintenance and upkeep, so or the condition not being deteriorated. So I I think that's important, so the commitment part, they've talked about several steps in the commitment to different steps to maintain the condition in non-deteriorating state. So that's something to think about, and we know.
They have recited the, our own process of reciting the the house itself or the building itself, the shapings are been taken care of as far as that goes. So there is some work in progress on it. I think it was ongoing at the time of the application of the meeting, whatever it's with the committee and such. So some parts of it, yes, I know that they took down quite a few trees in the back portion of it as well. I'm kind of look at that as 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 working upon that, but it probably would have been helpful to have, well, that was part of the renovation plan. For the existing building. Somebody else have the renovation plan?
Yeah, there's pictures here.
Okay. I don't have that stuff.
Why, right? Share.
Is it, is Don on there?
Yep, Don's available.
Did he buzz in? Maybe he wanted.
It's time meeting.
It's time.
Say, do we?
I'm on, available if you have any questions of me or want me to try to explain anything to you.
Okay, okay, I guess, I guess for me, Don, we use a, I will call it a standard definition of blight in the city? Is there one?
We don't. We don't have a definition of blight in our, in our ordinances like we do adjoining properties, for an example, that's defined. Blight, to me, when I reviewed these applications, you know, I'm looking at, you know, there's a difference between an ugly building and maybe a blighted building. These are just my opinions, but these are the opinions I used as I went through the application. So, that building's got siding, it's got a couple mismatched shingles on the roof, other than that, I mean, it's basically a sea of asphalt, I think it's pretty close to zero property line. If you go behind it, you know, there's, right now, there's some weeds and stuff along the fence line that could be trimmed, but it's so far off Ripley Street, you know, it hasn't caught the attention of code enforcement, nor have we got any complaints. I think the, all the trees that were cut down that Danny was referring to are actually on the next door neighbor's property. That one's undergoing a renovation with a couple building permits for the exterior. So, when I looked at the application, it just makes sense to me that if somebody's opening a business, they're going to make the outside work and look better as far as the building itself goes. As far as installing parking lights and things like that for the parking lot, or for pedestrian walks, or the bike rack, a lot of those things are already covered in our zoning ordinance when they go to get their special use permit. Those kind of things are addressed by the planning commission and through staff, through site planner views. And things that are in there like that, those aren't really requests, those are just things you have to do anyway, if you're doing a building project or getting a special use permit, and depending on what you're doing, there's different things that are required. So, that was basically what I looked at. When I cleared up my mind about the scoring and didn't assign a point. I mean, a lot of the programs that they outlined are great, you know, great community ideas, but, again, the one thing that is defined in our zoning ordinance is adjoining properties, and that's the rear, both sides, and the property that's directly across the street. And so, I didn't see anything rode up in there that would, well, I didn't see a lot of blight all the way around the building, like, you know, there wasn't a falling down house next to it or anything like that. But that's, that's my basis for not giving it any points for blight.
Thank you. Thanks, Don.
Can I ask for clarity? So, we are being marked down because there is no blight to fix?
No, you're not being marked down.
Or, no, I'm sorry, no points awarded because they consider no blight to be fixed?
So, let me, I guess, from that perspective, which, and the committee can correct me if I'm wrong. If you were, if you had chosen the Zoneric building, for instance, you know, everybody knows where that's at. And your proposal was very similar, and you were going to use the existing building and make the renovations that you made, that you're making. I think the committee would be more responsive to say, yeah, you're, you're, you're dealing with some blight here. It's falling in, the back garage is caved in, there's, I mean, it's kind of broken windows, things like that. So, 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 yes, to answer your question, if you were to have chosen a building that you're going to, that's, that's blighted, and excuse me for not using the, the planning commission's definition of blight, using mine, and perhaps the committee's, Don's. It's blighted, it looks horrible. Can't wait for somebody to take and fix that. So, you don't, so you don't get penalized for choosing a building that's in better condition, but you just don't get points for choosing a building that's in better condition. Because you're, I guess, and I'm just arguing for the, for the committee. At that, you could realistically open, open the doors to that building, other than the security and all the different, not the inside stuff. Let's say you did all the inside stuff, and you did absolutely nothing to the outside whatsoever. It still looks as good as it did when the lighting place was in it. I mean, it's, it's not blighted, it's not an eyesore, we don't get complaints about it all the time. So, so I guess that's the perspective of blight that it sounds like the committee went off of.
Yeah, and the intent of this rubric was to target those properties.
Target the properties.
Almost incentivize those properties, properties being, you know, mixed up, or, you know, lack of a better term. So, it's not that you're being penalized, it's just that there was an incentive built into the rubric for that type of property.
Excuse me. Sorry about that.
So, there are other applicants that chose buildings that are blighted and asked for a point because of.
Correct.
May I make a clarification point through the question here? May I read the rubric to everyone here? Applicant makes commitment to specific neighborhood improvements through elimination of light onsite or adjacent property. Did you do that?
Yes.
Did you put program? That's, that's simply how we read it, and I know your intent, and you're telling me that now, and I appreciate that, and I certainly respect that. I'm just going by how we read it and interpreted it. How do we have programs, and many places do this, they have programs that were volunteers from the neighborhood. One of the places we have, they have community centers, that they have actually people that take care of blight, which in commitment with a new business, as we would be able to do. So, we were on the assumption that we would have these programs here with either volunteers or our personnel making sure there is no blight maintenance, and I thought that's what this meant. It wasn't like we had to have a property that was in blight that we had to remedy before we could open. It doesn't say anything like that here. It says applicant makes commitment to specific neighborhood improvements through elimination of blight onsite or adjacent property. You know, so he set up a program, we have the property, this is how we would eliminate it. It's a vacant building, and we're, we're basically putting in place programs that would not allow blight to occur.
And I get that, and I like that, and I, again, same as a lot of this stuff. I really appreciate even the other stuff that didn't even score points that you guys proposed in your, in your stuff, the outreach, all that. But, but what, what, the suggestions that you made, albeit very community minded. They, they, they seem to be more structured towards what you had said about, about preventing blight. This is asking for, through the elimination of blight, and I'm only arguing for the committee at this present time, because I'm still trying to stay in the middle here. The elimination of blight, the committee doesn't see any blight currently on that location. So, they didn't score you any points because your location and the adjacent property doesn't have blight. I like what you addressed and the programs you present to keep blight from happening and to perhaps make it look better. But making something look better doesn't necessarily mean that you eliminated blight if there was none to begin.
No, but our commitment there, excuse me.
No, please.
I didn't interrupt, but I think our commitment is there as it requested that we would do, and that's to the word, it says that, and how we would eliminate that and through these programs. We're just responding to the question as we received it and we interpret it.
And is blight determined as a simple vacant building, or is there a certain amount of calls you get in about the building being derelict to determine it is a blight? When do you make the cutoff to when it's, it's a blight?
Well, Mr. Komet said there's no definition.
So, that's where I would like to, so I will ask you. I will ask you guys, you've been on that site several times. If this is truly asking for the elimination of blight onsite or the adjacent property, explain to me what blight you saw on that property and the adjacent property that you're going to eliminate in order to get the two points. Specifically, what blight have you seen on that property or the adjacent property that you're going to eliminate?
Well, if you want me to address that, now that's not part of this question.
I was reading it, I just put it in different order.
Okay.
Eliminate blight on the site or property, completely regardless of what our definition of blight is, I would like you to tell me what it is.
Okay, a vacant building that's being unused. There is a RV port in the back that is basically falling in on itself, and that's near the property line, right next to a residential house on the other side of the lot. And the on-ramp to get into the actual building, not the on-ramp, the thank you, the entryway to get in from the road, it's, it's cracking.
What's an RV port?
It's just.
Like a lane two?
Yeah. There's plywood, and it's right on the property line next to a residence.
Behind the building? Can't see it from the front.
That's, that's why it hasn't been titled blight, it's there, we're going to clean it up, we plan to anyway, regardless of this. However, that is blight back there. Into the lot line and to the neighbors behind there. It looks like at one time years ago, there may have been an access or a easement through there behind those properties, there was a gas station there where the general store is, and it looks like something came through there at one time. It looks like it's been used for everything else, but what it was original intention was. So, again, that's not seen, so when someone drives by there, they don't see this, but it's there. And yes, that's blight that we will clean up, we didn't.
Because that's what I would have wanted to see, I guess, to the, to award these two points. As being on the committee, I would, I would have wanted to see specific neighborhood improvements through the elimination of blight on the site or adjacent property, and, you know, the, the RV port is, is falling, so we're going to remove that, there's a cracked entryway, we're going to, we're going to fix that. Had there been broken windows, we're going to completely, you know, repair the windows, or think, things that are, things that are blight. But, but it wasn't.
We felt the visual description of the actual layout that we gave should have been sufficient to cover all of that.
As well as the programs that we had in place to do this as well. And again, that was our interpretation of this from you, we did not know your intent at the time that we answered.
Do you want to know how the state of Michigan defines blight property?
Right.
The property has been declared a public nuisance in accordance with a local housing, building, plumbing, fire, or other related code or ordinance. That's number one. Number two, the property is an attractive nuisance because of physical condition or use. Number three, the property is a fire hazard or is otherwise dangerous to the safety of persons or property. Number four, the properties have the utilities, plumbing, heating, or sewage disconnected, destroyed, removed, or rendered ineffective for a period of one year or more, so the property is unfit for its intended use. Number five, the property is tax reverted, property owned by a municipality, by a county, or by the state. Number six, the property is owned or is under the control of a land bank, fast track authority under the Land Bank Fast Track Act. Number seven, the property is improved real property that has remained vacant for five consecutive years, and that is not maintained in accordance with applicable local housing or property maintenance codes or ordinances. And number eight is the property has code violations posing a severe and immediate health or safety threat, and has not been substantially rehabilitated within one year. Within one year after the receipt of notice to rehabilitate from the appropriate code enforcement agency or finally termination of any appeal, whichever is later.
And is it any of those? It's not, and it's any of those, right?
Right. Yeah, so blighted property means property that needs any of the following criteria.
And again, no matter what anybody's definition is, they are, it's yours, whatever, we had presented to you the commitment to this specific neighborhood improvements through elimination of blight, and we will do that, at the business, we will do that, with the neighborhood there and everything else. I do with the other businesses I own, Ron.
Read your thing again, because I can't find it. I'm sorry. Kevin, read the, read your argument about that specific point today. Do you still have it?
Yeah, the, so we had the three pieces, the landscaping, was that it?
Okay.
The, we go back two slides. So, that's the first one, the design and renovation through it, and this is in addition to the visual descriptor of the actual layout.
Right, that's fine, okay, that's fine.
You want me to reread this?
If you don't, if you don't.
Neighborhood provisions has given thoughtful consideration to its community context in relation to the design and renovation facility at one twenty South Ripley Boulevard. In its facility design, Neighborhood Provisions principles will pay careful attention to the aesthetic of their buildings, the cleanliness of their grounds, and the security of the facility as a whole. Neighborhood provisions will renovate the existing building or its facility, and this process will also make a special effort to minimize any impact these activities may have on their neighbors. Will also make a great effort to ensure that all waste generated in this process is dealt with properly, and ensure that all renovations receive city approval or the code and are in alignment with the neighborhood aesthetic. So, that was design and renovation. And then the next slide. Thank you, litter control. That's where we will support municipal community initiatives to help address this in addition to our staff being tasked with hourly monitoring of our parking lot, rear side of buildings, collecting and removing litter and debris. Like you said, that's to keep light away.
Right.
And the final one. And maintenance, and people have a buffer between the sidewalk and the store for its security, beautification of the area, and to mitigate foot traffic in the parking area. And people place planters to delineate separation of public sidewalk and parking area while also beautifying the current area. NP will also create a light plan that will illuminate the parking lot and surrounding sidewalks to enhance the pedestrian experience. Now, these show that they will mitigate any further blight, but I think our visual representation of the actual site plan shows that we will eliminate current light.
What do you think, over there, anyone? Well, I can share some thoughts. What do you think from your point of the elimination, you know, to get that based on what the application says? You know, you make some great points, you know, within here of that, but it's like the sign two points that the applicant made a commitment to specific neighborhood improvements through elimination of blight. Okay, that's the elimination of blight onsite or existing property. So, that's where I'm trying to figure out, okay, what in here is showing me the elimination, an elimination in my.
elimination, and elimination in my mind, that word is, there is current blight, or it is a blighted property, and I'm going to eliminate that. Okay, uh, your, your plan proposes a lot of things to prevent.
Correct.
And if we ask, where, what are you going to prevent? You know, the two points the applicant made a commitment to specific neighborhood improvements through elimination, and that's a key word for me, of blight, but we didn't. There are the next two, there are the next two.
The next two are.
Sorry.
App- applicant commits physical improvements to exterior of existing building or structure which was awarded a point. Applicant submits maintenance plan that provides for upkeep of property, including exterior or right-of-way, which was awarded a point.
Okay.
Which are very, which, which I'm trying to delineate between giving you points for the litter control and the odor, I think, was on there, and the planters, um, because those are commitments to physical improvements and maintenance and property upkeep. And if they're awarded for those, which are very specific, and then, and then also for the elimination of blight is, so they've been delineated, is that the right word? So they're different. So we've put on here that they're, that they're different. Maintenance plan, upkeep of property, exterior improvements, and right-of-way are different than physical improvements to exterior building or structure, and different again to the elimination of blight onsite or adjacent property. Because they're all separate point values.
Okay.
And I didn't, so I have to try and, so I'm trying to, when you reread what you were doing, I have to pull out, I have to pull out litter control, because there's no litter there yet, so you're just going to control them and maintain in the future. So that's, that was upkeep of the property and exterior. The things about the right-of-way, it's perfect, you put those in there to get, you put the planters and the right-of-way and stuff in there, I'm assuming to get the points for the specific right-of-way. Physical improvements to the interior or to the exterior of the existing building or structure, you've got that, you've got, you know, perspectives. So I'm just trying to make, I'm just trying to, to get the, the best argument from what was in the documentation as to what the commitment is to eliminate blight on the site or adjacent property, other than, other than obviously moving into the building itself.
Or, yeah, whether the proposed new construction and the proposed
Right.
renovation.
Right.
Which should eliminate any blight that was on there.
Yeah. Unless there was none that existed in the first place. But with the things that you mentioned.
The vacant buildings.
It's debatable as to whether, I guess, for us, as to whether the vacant building, fixing the carport, um, which is obviously maybe perhaps structural, I didn't see, I didn't look, I'm sorry, makes it kind of hard for me, but, um, and, you know, cracked entryway and things like that, so. So we're here to determine, I guess, whether we agree with the committee that said it's not necessarily blight, or do we, or do we agree with them and say that it is blight, even though, okay, they're going to do it, because we can see, I guess, it wasn't, it wasn't as specific as I, as I would have hoped, you know, specific neighborhood improvements. But we can see from their plan, I think the carport is even on here. It's even on the plan, so they're aware of the carport. It's on the perspectives we have. So I guess that's where we're coming from.
Okay, so I just quickly looked up blight, what first popped up comes from the Oxford Dictionary, and it says vacant properties are a blight on the neighborhood. So they cannot do something with that building, and it will continue to be a blight on that neighborhood. So it's a blight and it's, and it's, and it's, just because it's been empty, no one's using it, it is a blight on the neighborhood.
So just moving into it is eliminating blight onsite.
And eliminating, you know, was that, we talked about this earlier, so I'm bringing this point around, just to make sure that we're being consistent, is using that was that our intent. You're eliminating blight, in, in your mind, that's how you saw it. Anyone that took any building to the city, well, you know, was basically eliminating blight.
That was an empty and vacant for a long time, yes. Yes. Or an empty lot would be an elimination of blight.
Mm-hmm. Just trying to understand exactly your definition.
Oxford.
And, uh, pardon me, yeah, and, yes, that's what it is.
Advocate makes commitment to specific neighborhood improvements through elimination of blight onsite or adjacent property. Or, so it doesn't have to be both, this is a whole. Yeah, so as soon as someone moves into an unoccupied building, they get two points for this.
It's an improvement, if the building's been empty for a long time, and there's been no use there.
Okay.
It'd be like, and I'll go to my neighborhood, there's an empty house next to me for years and years and years. It's a blight on my neighborhood. It decreases my property value. Um, and the minute somebody moves into that building and there's life and activity in, in the home next to me, and they're going to start to make improvements, that improves my neighborhood. The blight has gone.
So if an applicant, and again, I'm just clarifying this in my mind, because I'm, I'm following your logic, is if they were to go to a business, and the business had a business in it already, but they offered to say, hey, we're going to buy your building, we wouldn't consider that blighted, because no, there's already been, that business has been operational. And so on and so.
It's been occupied, it's been running, I don't consider.
And there are several that, you know, so we're all aware, there are several other buildings that have been like that. I just want to follow that definition.
Two, and we didn't specify that there's some blight, blight is commonly used, and the articles say it's just the more and more empty spots in the downtown, it's considered a blighted area, just because, not because they're, the plumbing doesn't work, but because they're empty. And that is another common use of the term. It is, company, your system's building been empty, you know?
At least a year and a half, with my knowledge, just general knowledge. Don, do you have any knowledge of how long that building has been empty?
Well, with the lighting gallery as last, it's been a long.
Yeah, it's, it's been empty for several years, I'm sure. The lighting gallery hasn't been there for quite a while.
All right, yeah, at least, yeah.
And I also want to add that we've also restricted pretty actively the options in the community. So I think just our buffers, so I think that's part of the consideration.
Where?
A lot of blighted, a lot of blighted properties weren't even allowed to be considered because of the location.
And so that would be, that would be the points for the blighted property that weren't awarded, and you're saying the other points, because I don't have the matrix in front of me, the, the rubric, I'm sorry. Right, yeah, thank you, that too. It's nine o'clock.
That's the last one.
Oh, that's just the last one, this is the last one. Yeah, is that right? Yeah, no, yeah, if the, you know, the points, were those the only points for the blighted that were, were missing, that were not awarded?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, those other two, they had, that I read earlier, they had already got them.
Yeah.
And we can't take them back. It's not part of the, no. So are you going to make a, I'm assuming, a?
Yes, I'm going to make a motion that we award the two points for the elimination of blight onsite or adjacent property.
Any other discussion on that? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Waldorf?
Hi.
Councilman Hance?
Yeah.
And Mayor Potem Johnson, yes. Motion great.
I've been the only one that was. All right. Appreciate you spending so much time with us, having a very professional.
Thanks, I know. This has been a delightful three hours.
Certainly, just briefly to address, um, your company that came, um, it's always great to have a lot of support. Um, I just do, I do want to just let you know that, 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 that there was no intention on, on the local support part, there were points awarded for, for local, um, and you're not appealing them, so apparently you got them.
Yeah.
Um, and so we set a point system, uh, that was built into the rubric. And, and so, so this really wasn't about us not supporting someone local and all the great things that you've got in your proposal, or, or yourselves and your family, and it's really not what it was about. Um, so, so we did put that into it, um, into the scoring, and, and, and it fell where it fell. Um, had we weighted it even more, I guess, um, had we weighted even more towards locals, whether that would have been done better for, for the local ones that did it or not, is, I guess, I'd have to look over all the points and things again, but, um, but there again, it's really, it really wasn't about us wanting to support an out of, an out of town business more than somebody else, but we had to give it, we had to give them as much opportunity to score points as they buy them. So, um, certainly appreciate your time tonight, and, um, I think everybody took notes.
Yeah, I can do it, sorry.
And Bill, is that, that's final, where the, um, unless the, uh, unless the party wants to take this further, but as far as the council, um, I believe we awarded three more points this evening than they had. So that's, that's our portion tonight. Yes, okay. So, and, yeah, if you would like to, please.
Sure, so that, let's, um, we have six applications, um, the scoring for them are as follows, forty-one, forty, thirty-nine, that would bring, um, neighborhood provisions up to thirty-eight or into fourth position, and then we have thirty-seven and eighteen.
All right, um, and again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I enjoyed this a lot more than it might show.
Oh, good joke.
I have allergies, so it's probably normal. But thanks again, and we look forward to it very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for your time on this.
Thank you. And if someone would like to share another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.